Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District One, Glenn Davis, District Two, Bruce Huff, District Three, Toya Tucker, District Four, Charmaine Crabbe, District Five, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim and District Six,
Joanne Kogle, District Seven,
Walker Garrett, District Eight, Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor, John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor, Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Fourteenth city council meeting. We are going to begin this meeting as we begin all our meetings, and that is by asking God's presence on this place. And I believe, is Reverend Delta Outley here? I did not see her. I'm gonna ask if Wayne Anthony, kind of spur of the moment, he's a former council member and a minister, and I'm gonna ask him if he wouldn't mind offering up our request to God today. Thank you, sir. If you'd hit that button, I'll get it turned on for you. If you'll hit the button. There you go. Try it one more time. There we go.
High tech. Let us pray. God, for every person here in this place, we give thanks for their concern for the city of Columbus, for the people that are involved in the leadership role in providing public safety, for all those who work diligently to make this a better place for all of us to live, we give thanks. We thank you for their families who generously give of their time as well and give their support. Now, we pray for your divine presence here in this place. May your presence, your power, your peace prevail and lead us and direct us that we might bring our, do our part to bring the kingdom of heaven here on earth. We pray it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Wayne, thank you very much. Thank you for your service to the city of Columbus as the city council for so long. All right, if you would, please stand and join me and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the majesty of the world and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we've got a, we've got a number of resolutions today, but before we do that, I would entertain a motion on the minutes from February 28th. Motion second to approve the minutes. Are there any edits, any questions or deletions that need to be made? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are received. Counselor Tucker.
Mayor, can I go next? But can you make a, tell the individuals they're outside the door, they can't come in?
Oh, yes. If we could get one of the bailiffs, one of the sheriffs to let-
It's Ronzel Buckner and a few individuals, but they're at the door.
They're at the door, Ronzel Buckner and a few individuals to receive a proclamation, a resolution regarding Lyndon Birch. All right, and the first, first order of business today after the minutes is a resolution in honor of Lyndon H. Birch. So all those who are representing Mr. Birch, if you could come to the podium. And I'll turn it over to Counselor Tucker.
All right. Hello. Good morning to the Birch family. You'll go over there on that side. Good morning. Good, good morning, everyone, and my continued condolences and prayers to you and your family in this community. I'm gonna read the resolution, but you know what Lyndon meant to me. So, and I appreciate you all for being here. I will say to Mr. Buckner, he reached out to me to basically put this resolution together to honor Mr. Lyndon Birch for being an amazing community leader. But what we did, Mr. B., we not only did the Turnaround Columbus Resolution, we did one for mayor and council as well. So it will say the same thing, but it will represent both Turnaround Columbus and also the city of Columbus. So, thank you. The resolution reads, "Whereas Monday, January 16th, 2023, marked the passing of Lyndon H. Birch, an amazing community leader and friend to so many in Columbus, Georgia. Whereas Lyndon's calling was focused on helping to find solutions for and empowering at-risk, underprivileged youth to overcome obstacles and become successful. His experience in working with, with children sparked his creativity and innovation, spawning his founding of the American Youth Arts Society, Incorporated, in 2015, as well as the American Youth Film Festival." Whereas, after realizing few film festivals were dedicated solely to students, he created a film festival to showcase American youth cinematic content creators. Whereas, in 2019, the American Youth Film Festival continued its mission in expanding into the American Youth Arts Society, Inc., which is dedicated to introducing film photography, runway modeling, music, and fashion to at-risk youth and disadvantaged and underserved communities throughout America. Whereas, after teen gun violence injured a student filmmaker who had been involved with the film festivals, Lyndon and the society launched the Shoot Film Not Guns Youth Initiative in 2020. The purpose of the initiative was to use film work as a catalyst for peace and to change the hearts and minds of youth. Whereas, the effort provided a platform for anti-bullying, student activists, gun safety advocates, and student filmmakers to inspire other youth to find solutions for violence in America. Shoot Film Not Guns became Lyndon's focus and mission because it required youth to cultivate a broad spectrum of skills to develop their strong anti-bullying and non-violent solutions. Whereas, his dream and goal of the initiative has been to reduce bullying and violence in America's middle and high schools using student ambassadors, teachers, and administrators. Whereas, Lyndon's commitment to build in peace and fighting youth violence drew him to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s outdoor learning trail sponsored by Turnaround Columbus. Soon, he was managing and organizing Turnaround Columbus Annual Service Project, a trail cleanup on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. His leadership and agility increased the number of student participants, expanding, expanded cleaning areas along the trail and provided student and community exposure to Columbus African-American history. Whereas, because of the success of the trail cleanups and his dedication to, to the people of futu, of future, of the future of our community, Lyndon was selected as a board member of Turnaround Columbus, where he served with distinction, especially in bringing the skills of the Shoot Film Not Guns young filmmakers to Turnaround Columbus. Now, therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia, and Turnaround Columbus hereby resolves that this, this council expresses its serious condolences to Lyndon H. Birch family. May his life continue to be an example for, for us all. And this-
You gonna move it to adoption?
Oh, yeah. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Motion and a second to adopt the resolution. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? It's approved.
I forgot we had to vote. So, this is, I'm, I'm real emotional. When I first got to Columbus, Mr. Lyndon Birch was one of the first people that I met. My daughter attended South Gerard Girls, Inc., and I'll never forget just the impact that he made on Megan's life. And she was there in kindergarten. I mean, she started as a youngster and grew up with him. When Girls, Inc., before they end up closing South Gerard, what Lyndon did for those young people, and I saw how dedicated he was to those girls, and seeing that this, this area that, you know, we were really fighting to keep this center open because it was a feeder center for MLK. And now we see all the violence, you know, going on because we don't have a lot of places for our kids to go. But our girls got out there. They raised $50,000 in less than two months, and the center still closed, crushing the spirits of these young people. But Lyndon did not stop. And, and I'm so appreciative of the work that he did, but I wanted to note publicly, on Monday, January 16th, Lyndon made sure that Megan got to the job because she was one of his ambassadors, and she was doing some, some film and photography, and they were gonna put together a documentary. Lyndon had passed while Megan was out there. But the first thing they did was say, Lyndon wanted Megan to get her money. And that, and I mean, that means so much to me because he was just full of integrity, full of passion, full of compassion, full of heart, and he cared about these kids. It took, I did not tell her on that day. And actually, we talked about it last night, and she put her shirt on after she took her shower, getting ready for bed, and she said, "Thank you, ma." Thank you, ma, for doing this for Lyndon. And I thank you, Mr. B., for reaching out because people don't understand the magnitude that individuals in our community actually make on our children. And she called him Coach. That's a personal, respectful acronym. She looked up to him, and many more people looked up to Mr. Lyndon Birch. So, I want to let you know, don't hold your head down. You hold your head up, and you stand strong and proud because he is the king in this community, and I appreciate you for lending him to us. Thank you.
Ma'am, would you like to make any comments?
I just want to say, there have been a lot of nights where I watched him stay up late, worrying about the situation in our community and trying to figure out ways to improve them, whether it was at Girls, Inc., the Boys and Girls Club, whatever he was trying to do. And I remember when he thought that what he was trying to do at those centers was not enough, and he branched out on his own. He started saying, "Well, I need to do something more." And there were a lot of sleepless nights. I did give up a lot because he was not only here in our community. Because first of all, if you don't know already, this is not Lyndon's home. This is actually my home. He's a South Carolina transplant by way of Atlanta. And when he came to Columbus, he really had no obligations here. It was me. But he wanted to make things better. He wanted to reach out to what he saw going on in the community and try to make things better. Everybody can't bounce a basketball, you know? Everybody's not gonna be a road scholar. But there are the arts, and there are other ways that kids need to know that they could, they could make it, they could stay out of trouble. And that's what he wanted to do. And I just, um, just want to say, wherever he is, I know he's smiling, smiling down on us, and I know he's happy with that big old grin that he used to have. Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing him with this community. Counselor Huff?
Good morning. I apologize for running behind this morning. I was listening to Counselor Tucker when I did over what she said. But you know as well as I do about all that was stated this morning and raising money and everything, how many hours we spent, after hours, the kids trying to do homework, and you trying to balance things and make sure that he ate a decent meal. So, I did not know the last time you and I got together. I asked because I had just seen him at Panera Bread taking a break to get back to the kids. And you told me he was doing well, and you were keeping him going, and he was excited. So, as the Counselor Tucker stated, keep your head up. And if we can be of any service to you, please reach out to us. And we just appreciate his service. He was a big, 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 big man in this community. Thank you.
Yep, and Seth Brown, the Director of Crime Prevention, is gonna come up and make a presentation.
We, um, let me turn this a little bit this way. You know, Counselor Tucker asked me to speak briefly, and Lyndon became a friend, and that's why I call him Lyndon, not Mr. Birch. We met when the Girls, Inc. was gonna close, as you were talking about Counselor Tucker. And he, I mean, he was so passionate about saving this place. The problem was, it was in severe disrepair. I had met multiple times the Girls, Inc. and some of their executives, and, and I told Lyndon that, and he said, "Well, then I'm gonna do something else." He said, "I'm gonna find another way to reach these kids. I'm gonna find another way to make this happen." And I think from there, he went to work for the Boys and Girls Club, and then he started his own program. And the Shoot Film Not Guns program is a huge example of what I think we're doing right in Columbus in funding those programs. Lyndon, you'll find a lot of people in Columbus that didn't know who Lyndon was, and that's because he didn't talk about himself. He talked about his programs and his kids. And a perfect example of that is his son that would come visit with him. And you could tell immediately that he was already instilling those same values in his son as a leader. I, I was talking to Ms. Birch, and I, and I asked her how she was doing. This has been several weeks ago. She said, "I'm doing good." And I said, "Well, how's your son doing?" She said, "He's taken over. He's taking care of his mom, and he's running the house." And I said, "You know, that right there just shows what kind of man he was." You know, I've always said, "When I die, I just hope my kids can get in front of a mic and say, 'My dad tried.'" And Mr. Birch did way more than try. He was a massive warrior in Columbus, Georgia. And this is the last thing I'll say. Years ago, some of y'all might remember this, when George Bush said that the 10,000 points of light, I think that was the, the phrase, we had a light go out in January 16th. He was an amazing man who was constantly trying to help children. So, thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Ms. Birch, if you would, come around, let us thank you, shake your hand, and I've got a copy of the proclamation for you. The rest of you too. Mr. Buckner, if y'all want to come, like this.
We can. Where'd you go? At the bottom right. Hang on just a second. We've got one more for you. About left. Probably missed this up.
Had an opportunity to meet Mr. Birch and talk about the Shoot Film Not Guns program, and he was really doing some incredible things. So, he will be missed. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing Partners in Education Week. And I'm gonna ask our Mayor Pro Tim if he will read that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have anybody with the chamber or with Partners in Education that wants to come up front?
Appreciate y'all being here this morning. It's my privilege to publish the proclamation, which reads as follows. "Whereas Partners in Education, or PA, is celebrating its 36th anniversary in Columbus. Whereas Partners in Education was founded with the goal of enhancing community engagement with the Muskogee County School District and schools throughout the greater Columbus region. Whereas, this engagement includes partnerships from every walk of life, business, churches, civic clubs, post-secondary institutions, and military units, united in their goal of supporting our community's young people. And whereas, these partnerships provide countless volunteer hours and significant financial support to the schools in the greater Columbus region. And whereas, the city of Columbus recognizes the dedication of hundreds of organizations participating in PA every year throughout our school districts. Now, therefore, our mayor, Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim the week of March 13th through the 17th as Partners in Education Week."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for this show of support for the Partners in Education initiative on behalf of the Columbus Chamber of Commerce, the Partners in Education Board, the hundreds of active partnerships, and the schools of Muskogee County School District. Thank you again for this show of support.
Thank you, Connor. Yes, ma'am? You have anything?
Thank you.
If you would, come around, let us thank you, and I'll present you with the proclamation. All right. Next, we celebrate Let's Read Muskogee Month, and the Literary Alliance is gonna be, members of the Literary Alliance are gonna be receiving this proclamation. Counselor Kogle, you wanna hit your button, and I'll- Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for coming. The proclamation for the Let's Read Muskogee Month reads as, "Whereas Literary, uh, whereas Literary Alliance has been an integral part of the Columbus community since 1990, and through this organization, Columbus was named the first certified, certified literate community in Georgia in 1999. And whereas, the Literary, Literary Alliance continues to address the gaps in literary, literary services in the Chattahoochee Valley region and highlights the importance of reading and learning for the entire family, emphasizing the impact that parents have on their child's learning. And whereas, parents and their children's earliest and most continuous teachers, and are there, whereas, the parents, parents and their children are children's earliest and most continuous teachers and play a crucial role in their children's development and school's success from the beginning. And whereas, it is documented that reading skills help children build vocabulary, and that limited vocabulary is often characteristic of at, of at-risk youth. And whereas, individuals with adequate, inadequate literary skills are more likely to be among the unemployed, underpaid, with limited chance of upward mobility, low literary, literary skills have direct, have a direct impact on crime, recidivism, poverty, teenage pregnancy, and substance abuse. And whereas, families benefit from learning together and being involved in literary and educational activities at home and school and in the community. I, now, therefore, I, on behalf of Skip B., on behalf of B. H. Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim March 20, March 2023 as Let's Read Muskogee Month."
There's a lot of L's in that.
You want to make any comments?
There's a lot of literaries, a lot of L's.
So, my name is Brandy Tolbert. I'm the Director of Literary Alliance, and I've stood in this chamber on behalf of our families and children in the community several times. So, today is very special. I, you see, I wore my Wonder Woman, but I did not wear my cape. Although I'm a Director of Literary Alliance, I participate and support other literacy programs in our community. And so, I wear my Wonder Woman, and I read my Wonder Woman book to help support first readers to ensure that children, birth to five, receive a free book every month. And then, so with Let's Read Muskogee, already we've served over 500 youth just through, uh, beginning of the month of March. And I don't want to be long today. We will have ribbon cutting for our community book look in partnership with Community Reinvestments. She wanted to be up here, too. As well as the Boys and Girls Club. So, as I mentioned, one thing I love about Columbus is the sense of community. I stand here alone, well, not alone, because I have my mini-me. But I have so much support when it comes to providing literacy skills and educational resources for our community. So, thank you all for attending, and Let's Read Muskogee.
You want to introduce your helper?
So, this is Mariah. She is three years old. If you've been at any meeting with me the last three years, I'm pretty sure she was present at least one of them.
Well, welcome.
Say good morning. Say good morning.
Good morning. If both of you come around here, I'll present you with the proclamation.
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Barnes?
Now, Brandy has been doing this for so long, and you, you are Wonder Woman.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, and Brandy also, she's- And what a lot of people don't know, you know, reading is a skill. Has nothing to do with intelligence. And I remember, I think, the first day that Brandy started the Adult Literacy Alliance. And they are a very active group. They meet three times a week. And I wanted to speak on it, Brandy, because, you know, I bumped into a person who's retired. His employer still calls him on matters for whatever he's doing. I don't want to give out too much information. But this gentleman cannot read. And a lot of adults who, a lot of people think that, it's not a matter of intelligence. Reading is a skill, and a lot of individuals just never had an opportunity to go. And Brandy, I'd just like for you to just take a minute to speak because you are a hard-working young lady, and you are truly Wonder Woman. Would you speak about the adult program, please?
I appreciate Counselor Barnes reminding me to speak about the point of adult literacy as well. That's one of the benefits of our program is that we work to strengthen that cradle-to-career pipeline. That's from birth forever. And so, thank you. And so, our adult literacy program is the reason why Literacy Alliance was created, to address the uneducated workforce. And so, we worked with adults with low literacy skills to build their confidence, to build their skills, and then push them on to attain additional education or find them a career. So it's very important for adults to have those basic skills. And as he mentioned, our class is in session right now. I ran in to get my shield, but I had to run right back out so I could be here on time. But our class does meet Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine to noon. And it's so important to have those because we have a lot of educational opportunities in our community as far as careers in Columbia State, the Technical College. We also have several GED programs. But Literacy Alliance is the only program that serves those basic literacy skills from non-reading, phonics learning, and on up. So thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you for all you do.
Counselor Tucker.
I want to say congratulations. I was actually, I'm happy that Director Scott had gave me the information. But I want you to say exactly, since you have a captive audience, where's the ribbon cutting, you know, and just give those details. And also, I want to publicly thank you for your support in June 10th last year and this year, and all the stuff that, you know, you do within our community. But just let us know where the ribbon cutting is because you never know, you might get some attendance.
So this afternoon, we'll have a ribbon cutting for our First Community Book Look. And this is a program to access to high-quality reading material for youth and adults. And this ribbon cutting will take place at four o'clock at Victory Mission. That addresses 3448 North Lumpkin Road. And this is, like I mentioned before, this is a partnership. So it's not just Brandy and Literacy Alliance. But this is made possible through Community Reinvestment with Rob Scott and his wonderful team. I don't know what I would, I probably wouldn't be standing here if we didn't win that grant from Community Reinvestments. But then we also have teams from the Boys and Girls Club, the club, that help decorate these Linda Libbiers. And then, of course, our Victory Mission. So this is just the first installation, but we have on track to install additional two more. And that's just, you know, from June. So this is a program that we're working to increase access to book, especially in South Columbus, but for all of Columbus as well. So our first three will be in South Columbus. That's Victory Mission. We'll have it at Family Reconstruction on Winston Road. And then, as well as, our office is right across the street from Farley Homes and Marshall Success Center. Thank you.
Fantastic. Counselor Thomas, did you have something?
If we're finished with that?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to remind our council and our audience that we are entering the season of competition in our schools. And our students throughout Muskogee County School District are competing in local, state, and national events for the best athlete, for the best vocational student, for the best drama student, for all of those things. And we have such a good program in Columbus, in our school district. And so, when you see those announcements that somebody has won a local, state, or national competition, get in touch with them and say, "Good job." They need all the encouragement we can give. And it happens over and over and over again in Muskogee County. And we are, we are just pleased and privileged to have that kind of programs, those kinds of programs in our community. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. All right. Next, we're privileged to have visit with us today, the Garrison Commander of Fort Benning, Colonel Mallie, along with Command Sergeant Major Sanchez. And I'm going to invite them to the podium. They're going to, I believe they have issued a date for the name change for Fort Benning. And it's really going to be an exciting event, I believe, and we're going to get a little update. Colonel Mallie, welcome, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having us here this morning. On behalf of Major General Buzzard, we'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to come and speak about the transition from Fort Benning to Fort Moore. And I think we have a short video we'd like to play. If we could go ahead and do that first, this is a public affairs video that we've launched a few weeks ago and really just a kind of introduction. Wanted here to talk to you today about the Moore family. So if we could play that video, please?
Yeah, Gerald Moore was a great leader. He was right there on the ground with us.
But she saw other people whose husbands were killed, and she knew her job was to take care of families.
I knew we prevailed. I knew we were going in for a hell of a fight. But never once did it cross my mind that we'd go down, not one time.
If you're a widow, you've got so much on your plate because of what she did. I don't have to worry about that. That's a huge loss.
You knew he was in command, and you knew he knew what was going on. He just was a soldier's soldier, and you just felt comfortable around him.
They are the married relationship that any married couple wants. It was defined by a deep, committed love. When you step back, it's a love story. It's a love story about their love and commitment to soldier and the nation.
Let us show that video there, just a little bit more about the Moore family. And as many of you know, we're approaching a unique and historic opportunity, the renaming of the installation for Lieutenant General Howell and Julia Moore for their meaningful and lasting contributions to our Army and the nation. I'd like to share a little bit about the process that's gotten us here. As many of you know, 2021 National Defense Authorization Act required the nine Army bases across the country be renamed no later than one January 2024. So after several levels of approval, we will be officially adopting the Fort Moore name, named for Howell and Julia Moore, on Thursday, May 11th, 2023. We've just recently gotten approval at the highest levels, the Secretary of the Army, to do that. So internally, we've also been reviewing physical and a number of assets that we have, buildings and roads, and other official references to the Benning name as part of this transition. So I want you all to know that this process is being implemented with great care, and we endeavor to keep the stakeholders and our community leaders informed throughout this process. As we recognize the spirit of service the Moore family represents, our mission remains our number-one priority. That will not change at Fort Benning, to train the world's finest soldiers and the world's finest fighting force. These changes will take time. We'll be working through them as a community, grateful to our community partners who offer their input throughout this process. And regarding this name change, we'll not only honor the Moores to their service to the Army and the nation, but our Army families and their service and sacrifice as well. So some of you may be familiar with Lieutenant General Howell and Julia Moore. So from this standpoint, it's really a reintroduction. But some of you who aren't familiar, this is really kind of the first introduction, and that's why we wanted to come and speak about them today. So some of you may be familiar with General Moore's time in the Idring Valley. He was a Korea and a Vietnam War vet. Julia Moore was a lifetime volunteer with the American Red Cross and was integral in improving the casualty notification process. That young woman on the video there was a Gold Star spouse that talked a little bit about the changes that Julia Moore made and how it has such an impact in the notification process for Gold Star families. So some of you may be also familiar with We Were Soldiers Once and Young, the movie and the book. And what I'll tell you is, if you've seen the movie, I would ask you, now that we're coming upon such a historic and monumental time, it may be worth watching again. I know a number of us in Fort Benning have watched it again, and there's new connections that we've made by really understanding so much more about the Moore family. What a wonderful husband-and-wife team, parents to five children who live close. A few of them live close, and we've had a chance to meet with them throughout this process. And they will be there. Four out of five of them are planning to be there right now in 11 May. We're really so lucky. So of those nine installations that are going to be renaming, we're the only one that's going to be renamed for a husband-and-wife team. So what a special connection that will have as well. Howell and Julia Moore exemplify the very essence of what it means to be an Army family. In short, their lives embody our Army values. Their service to the country has been selfless and steadfast. And as many of you know, they're also buried on Fort Benning, so a fitting tribute to them as well. I couldn't think of a greater role model for the inspiration of the next generation of men and women that are serving their countries, going through Fort Benning, learning how to be soldiers and warriors, and preparing themselves for potential combat. Now we carry the legacy of victory forward, which will be perfectly embodied by the Moore family. They were some of the finest Americans this country's ever produced, and we view the naming of this next chapter of history as really a great opportunity. I'd like to thank everyone again for their support of Fort Benning and the installation and being steadfast and reliable community partners. We obviously can't perform our mission without you, and it is a special opportunity for Sergeant Major Sanchez and I to come speak to you. We have responsibilities to our soldiers and families, but also, just as important, responsibility to the community as well. So I'd like to end there, and sir, if I may, if there are any questions, we're happy to answer those about the process or anything else as we are approaching this date.
Thank you. Counselor Huff.
Good morning, sir. Thank you for the presentation. Do you have a date and time? Yeah, that's what I was asking. Date and time for the celebration?
Thursday, 11 May. We don't have an exact start time. Because it's going to be hot, as we all know, it's likely going to be in the morning, probably 8:30 or 9:00 a.m. But Thursday, 11 May, it will be on post. It will likely be at Doughboy Stadium, which is an absolute historic and iconic location on Main Post. That was actually one of the locations, but a historic location because General Moore gave the speech to his battalion before they left for Vietnam inside Doughboy Stadium. We do have an implement weather formation, implement weather plan as well, but right now, the morning of Thursday, 11 May, sir.
Okay. Morning celebration?
Morning celebration Thursday, Thursday, 11 May.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of Colonel Mallie? Let me just say that, you know, in addition to this being a very historic occasion, and particularly because of the married couple being the source of the naming, renaming of the band, it is, it's also an opportunity for us to recommit as a community because what we support is much more than a name on a brick wall as you're going on to that post. What Columbus, Georgia, has always supported has been the soldiers. And that's one thing, the mission, the soldiers will never change, no matter what the name is. That's where our focus is. And we thank you, gentlemen, for your service. We thank you for the leadership. And we thank you, please take back to General Buzzard, how committed we are to continuing this relationship with Fort Benning. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I really want to thank General Buzzard, Connor Mealy, and all of Fort Benning, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing us together to talk about this transition, the plan, and how it spills over into Columbus. I know you have that meeting, Mayor, on the ground floor of the Government Center with all of the Fort Benning officials. And, but thank you for your work, for the way this has all come together in the transition. And Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like for Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge to just mention what we are doing in this transition. I appointed her to work on this, and this will be brief. But just wanted the community to know that it does spill over into Columbus, the naming, the Fort Benning. We have Fort Benning Road and so forth. But we've got our team working with Fort Benning to make this a smooth transition. So Deputy City Manager Hodge, if you will.
Good morning. So we have been working for several months, kind of behind the scenes, with Fort Benning and also with Georgia Department of Transportation. There's a lot of signage that directs you to Fort Benning, and so that will be the responsibility of GDOT. But we are investigating removing the panel from the bridge that leads into Fort Benning. Obviously, it was not built to be removed. So we are doing a lot of investigative work with GDOT to determine how we can remove that panel and then replace it with Fort Moore. So our goal is to have it removed by the May 11th date, and we'll work towards having it replaced with the appropriate name. We are looking at a complete inventory of all of our roads, parks, that have the Benning name. And we'll be coming back to council with a presentation for you to, you know, there's an entire process that will be required for renaming a road. It's not just as simple as changing the street sign. There are a lot of businesses and residents on that road that will need to have input into that process. So we'll be moving forward with that now that the date has been set. And we'll be coming back to council with a presentation on those additional things that will need to be addressed.
And with regards to that Welcome Bridge, it's such an incredible iconic site as people come onto Fort Benning. We will be in constant contact with Mr. Turner and with Mr. Welber, who were integral in trying to help us secure that. And so I think, just as a courtesy, we will make sure that they get regular updates on the process and know where we are in the efforts to try to get this all done. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank y'all so much for being here this morning. And please take back to General Buzzard our gratitude for all that Fort Benning does for our community and our nation.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Next, there's an update on the Columbus Police Department presentation of strategic plan by Chief Freddie Blackman. The chief is in the back. Welcome, chief.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, Mr. City Manager, and Mr. City Attorney. Before I begin my presentation, I do want to state a point of clarity because so many people have approached me asking my last presentation regarding the response to the Justin Hughes Assessment. Actually, it was not. It was in reference to the mayor's request to provide an update as it relates to Part I crimes and our staffing numbers at our police department. But today is a response to the Justin Hughes Assessment Report by way of a strategic plan that members of the Columbus Police Department, the command staff, and I, we worked on as requested by council. So in this strategic plan, this is our roadmap that will lead us over the next three years as we work in decision-making, based on the information that we received from this report. The goals, the action items are based on 10 strategic directions. And hopefully, as we look at our mission statement, we'll see, we'll see a plan that we have put in place that gives us a path to follow as we work towards preventing crime, as we work towards enforcing the laws, strengthening our community that we serve through our communication, through transparency. through our communication, through transparency, and responsive law enforcement, and, and our commitment to our core values of being professional as we go about each day, being respectful, showing integrity, and, and showing duty, attention to duty, and empathy as well. And we will continue with our vision statement, ensuring that we remain professional as we go through our training and partner with our community to ensure that our community is a safe place to live as we work towards reducing overall crime. The strategic directions, the, the ten strategic directions that were communicated in this assessment report would be communicated through four lines of effort, and those lines of efforts are personnel, operations, training, and community engagement. And this is information as we were informed by the Justin Hughes Assessment Report through communication with our command staff, as each member, uh, members of our command staff were assigned different segments of these ten strategic directions and recommendations from our retention committee. So in our personnel line of effort, the, the main effort that we want to focus on is retention. So I request that there's a reinstatement of the fifteen hundred dollar quarterly retention bonus to be paid to our sworn officers, as well as our nine-one-one immersion communication o- uh, officers. This, this retention bonus will be paid on a quarterly basis, and I request that it be retroactive to January of this year and lasts throughout this year. And this is something, as I've communicated, uh, with our mayor requesting some incentives to help towards retention, the mayor communicated with our city manager, and, and so communication has been with finance, and finance has stated, and I have an email where finance, where our finance department has communicated that this is something that actually can be implemented, uh, effective April next month. In addition to that, the employee, employee referral program where our officers who refer a police officer will receive a bonus of six hundred dollars in addition to that, an increase to our relocation fee for applicants that out, that are outside of the radius of fifty miles. We want to increase that from the thousand dollars that we have today to three thousand dollars, and this is something that our finance department says it, it can be done, and it could be done, and I'm requesting it to be done in April. Of course, it, it will require some reserve funds, about five days of re- reserve spending, uh, to, to take care of this, but this is something that we can definitely do. And I know some of these other requests will be something that needs to be handled through our budget process, and I know we're currently in our budget process, but as we look towards our next fiscal year, this, this coming July, I request that we give some attention for a supplement pay to our police officers in order for us to remain competitive in, in law enforcement field with our neighboring agencies and agencies comparable to our size. We would like for our officers to receive an additional five thousand dollars in supplement pay. Currently, our officers receive three thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars in OLOS and then two thousand dollars in supplement. But I'm requesting that we consider an additional amount, five thousand dollars for supplement pay, as well as supplement pay of five thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars for our nine-one-one employees. These employees provide a very critical role in our first responders', uh, way of doing business. They're on the, the, the initial end that receiving calls into nine-one-one and providing services, and they provide a very critical, uh, responsibility for providing safety to our city. And I would also like to see our nine-one-one personnel added to our public safety pension plan as we go forward. So the, the retention committee was initiated in two thousand twenty-one, and they brought forth ideas that we've been, some of which we've been able to implement, and some we're still working towards, uh, the, getting an approval. But some of the implementations that have taken place involve the, uh, beard policy. In addition to that, our uniform, and, and so we are, we're listening to our retention committee. I met with them on, on last week, and they have communicated some concerns as well as it relates to retention, and they would like to see, and we would like to see a revision of the, the retirement plan for our police officers. Currently, our retirement plan requires for thirty years of service, fifty-five years of age, and the officer will receive sixty percent of their salary. Well, with this revised reti- uh, retirement plan, our officers are seeking twenty years of service and to be able to receive sixty percent of the salary, or twenty-five years of service, and to be able to receive seventy percent of the salary, or thirty years of service with eighty percent of the salary with no age requirement. And I know, again, this is something that will definitely have to be worked out as we work through this budget cycle, as we approach this fiscal year, and as we communicate with our pension board, but this is something that our officers have communicated, and they would like to see done. Currently, we have a take-home car plan that allows officers who are not residents of Alabama to take their vehicles home, but due to legal restrictions, officers who reside in Alabama are not allowed to take their vehicle home. For that reason, uh, the retention committee and I, we're, we're requesting a consideration to be given for a one hundred and fifty dollar supplement to be paid on a twenty-eight day cycle, that's, that's the pay cycle for our police department, uh, basically once a month, paid to those residents of Alabama. In addition, a request has been made for tuition reimbursement at a hundred percent for officers as they work towards obtaining their associate's and bachelor's degree. And so, or be the associate's or their bachelor's degree, in, in some cases, they will have both, but in, 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 in this case, the stipulation would be that as we, reimbursement is paid, then we will, we're seeking the commitment from the employee where there will be a four-year commitment that whoever receives this reimbursement will be signed on to do at least four years. And if the, if the officer voluntarily resigns prior to the four years of service, then they will be responsible for reimbursing that portion of the tuition reimbursement they received on a pro-rata basis. Our officers are also requesting benefits as it relates to childcare, and they would like to see those benefits at no cost. And then, in order to be able to receive experienced officers in our department, uh, we are seeking the opportunity to have a lateral transfer for Georgia post-certified officers. So this will allow, allow Georgia post-certified officers up to, who have up to ten years of service, to come into our department, receive a bonus of eight thousand dollars, and start at that, on the pay scale based on their level of experience. For example, if that person has six years of service, they will come into our department with the opportunity to start on the pay scale as a six-year officer versus a brand-new officer. And again, we are seeking a four-year commitment. If the person voluntarily resigns prior to the four years, then we, we will be seeking a reimbursement based on that bonus that they received on a pro-rata basis. In addition to that, as we continue in our personnel line of effort, our recruitment will steadily increase. We're, we're, we, we seek to attend at least forty job fairs a year, and this is something that we've already started, and we will continue to go to our high schools to promote our cadet program as well as our nine-one-one career opportunities. And so as our recruiters go to the high schools, they will bring cadets with them as well as nine-one-one employees to be able to communicate to our high schoolers, to let them know that there are other options for them upon graduating from high school. In addition to that, our recruitment team will be seeking to purchase in our budget this upcoming budget year, new software that is, is called Interview Now, but it, this is software that would allow the process for the background as well as the application process to be expedited a little bit sooner than we are actually seeing it now. We have been able, over the years, we, we've been able to reduce the amount of time for the background process, but we seek to reduce that time even more, which hopefully will turn into an opportunity for us to receive even more numbers hired on into our department. And so this software, we're seeking the approval to make that purchase in this upcoming budget. Now, according to the time when we prepared these slots, we had numbers of two ninety-nine as, as our current staffing. As of today, we have about two hundred and ninety-five officers, and we have a hundred and forty-nine vacancies. And so in order to fill these vacancies, we are working in hopes to get these incentives added on for, for the men and women of the Columbus Police Department as we work towards being able to retain our officers as well as recruit additional officers. And so we, we're seeking to fill these positions as well as our, uh, civilian positions that are vacant, but we have in our strategy to be able to, to put other units in place so that we'll be able to continue to provide proactive policing services as well as additional community engagement services. And in doing so, we want to fill our vacant positions and then fill the unfunded forty-four positions that are unfunded currently to take us back to four eighty-eight. And once we fill those positions, we seek to be able to fill an additional eighty-four positions for our sworn personnel, fifty-nine for our civilians. And so this will give us a complement of officers and civilians to be able to provide services throughout our community that we are currently not able to provide. And as we do this and receive these incentives, we will be in position to, to be able to implement these services as we go forward. The line of effort as it relates to operations, this will give us an opportunity to review what's taking place in our Bureau of Investigations. So currently, we have reorganized our Bureau of Investigations, and this is something that needed to take place as a result of our staffing challenges. So this reorganization, as put in place by our Operations Division, it created a situation where we are providing more consolidated services and less specialized services. For example, if there was a homicide to take place prior to this reorganization, excuse me, prior to the reorganization, we would allow our homicide unit to investigate the homicide. But as we currently have it, our homicide unit would be investigating homicides, robberies, and assaults, which is actually not anything new to our department, because even when I was a lieutenant in our Bureau of Investigative Services, the, the squad that I was responsible for, we investigated homicides, robberies, and assaults, and this is something we, we have changed to, uh, reorganize, reorganize, uh, our Bureau of Investigative Services tempor- on temporary basis until we're able to get our numbers up. Now, as it relates to the recommendation of addressing the gang analyst, we, currently we have our gang intelligence, uh, analysis unit in our Office of Professional Standards, and their responsibility is, is a two-fold approach where information will be shared with our offices as it relates to high crime areas, and we are steadily working to, to validate our gang members and identify those individuals who have warrants that outstanding. And as our offices approach those individuals, we will certainly arrest those individuals, and we will continue to do so. And where our investigations lead us to that, that crime is taking part in the furtherance of gang activity, we, we've already met with our District Attorney's Office, and we already have this agreement where those individuals will be brought up on a direct indictment for a gang participation charge, and this charge will provide an even more severe punishment upon conviction. And so that's a direction that we are, we, we currently have, but we are going to transfer the responsibility, uh, to our Bureau of Investigative Services. However, uh, before that transfer takes place, we are going to make sure that we have gang analysts on board. We have requested additional civilians to be hired on that would help us in this transition process, so we're looking forward to that take place, to that being able to take place in our upcoming fiscal year budget, uh, fiscal year twenty-four. And, and this will allow this communication to steadily flow, but even more information will be received and, and shared with our officers as we have additional gang analysts to take place, but, but before this take place, there's a lot of training, very extensive training regarding what should take place in managing a gang intelligence and analysis unit. In addition to that, the, the second part of what we are doing with our approach on gangs, and I told you it's a two-pronged approach. One is proactive policing part, but the second one is the community engagement piece, and we have officers that are teaching prevention classes to the elementary students, to the middle schools, the high school, even college-age, uh, students. In addition to that, we, we hold community meetings so that we're able to communicate to our adult citizens as we seek to make them aware as to what's taking place regarding gang activity to make sure that they are aware and know how to identify something that may be taking place either in their household or a family member or a friend's household as they go about their day-to-day activity. And so our gang strategic plan would be even more in-depth, and of course, it takes a while for this process to take place, but we, we're in the process of researching other game citywide strategies for, uh, game activity, uh, reduction, and we, we are going to formulate the committee in order to create a citywide game strategy as we work and conduct our research and put plans in place as we work to eradicate gangs in our city and reduce it significantly. In addition to that, we are working to add, as I stated, civilians into positions where we currently have sworn personnel. For example, in our crime scene unit, everyone in that unit is sworn personnel, and so we are working hopefully to be able to receive approval to hire civilians, and as we are able to hire these civilians, we'll be able to place them in the crime scene unit that will eventually allow the sworn personnel to be transferred into another unit where they'll be able to provide police services, and the civilians will be able to handle the processing of crime scenes. But again, I know this is a process, this is something that has to be worked out through budget, and even to be able to get a unit like that fully staffed is, is going to take multiple years in doing so, but that's the direction that we are going. And our digital- In our digital forensic unit, we currently have one sworn officer and one civilian member there. We want to be able to transfer all that unit into where it's all civilians. But we know that's a process as well because there's training that has to take place. And as as we go through that process, eventually we'll be able to allow this sworn position in that particular unit to be moved into another law enforcement role within our department. And then our real-time crime center, that that's that's a unit where we we have an operation, but we're steadily working to develop this unit even more so that services will be provided to our investigators as well as to our officers in the field as they they take part in utilizing our law enforcement technology as it relates to our camera and other technology pieces that we have in place. And so a real-time crime center would need civilians there as well to be able to operate in that unit. We currently have sworn personnel there, but as we are able to put additional civilians there, we'll be able to have even more interaction and which will bring about a greater awareness as we will be able to, in some cases, may be able to prevent some incidents from occurring as we take advantage of the technology pieces that we have in place. Or in some cases, may be able to assist our investigators towards successfully investigating the case and bringing the case together for a prosecution. And so, but it's going to take adding additional personnel to our real-time crime center. In in addition to that, we have packages in place as we work for a build-out package to to improve the technology in our real-time crime center. Continuing in our operations line of effort regarding our technology, we we are steadily working to update and upgrade our CAD, our community, our computer aid dispatch, and our motor data terminal, our MDT, where officers in the field will be able to benefit by receiving information. For example, if if an officer checks the name on a person through a computer check, that information will be able to eventually populate so that the officer will actually see who they're interacting with as opposed to as we currently have and as we've shared over the years, we're checking the name and we have the information on the person that we're checking, but we don't have a picture to to verify that's who that person is. So this will be a great help and this is something that that we've been working on since two thousand twenty-one. We are currently working on it. And and this is, this is, this is, this is a process that will take a little time more to develop and upgrade as we work with our vendors. But as we work continuously in this effort, we will look forward to improving our technology in that area. Also, we are looking to improve our radio interoperability. Currently, you know, this is a process that has steadily been in the works and will continue to be in the works and is almost brought to completion. We currently have the ability to communicate with our Moscone County Sheriff's Office through our radio communication. But we do not have the opportunity now to communicate with our partners in Phoenix City, at the Phoenix City Police Department, or Lee County Sheriff's Office, or the Russell County Sheriff's Office. Or even when we are partnering with Georgia State Patrol when they're here, they have to use our radios. But with this new upgrade in technology, this would allow more radio interoperability to take place so that we will actually be able to communicate with one another through our radio traffic without having to borrow or loan out radios. And this is something that is close to completion. And so with a couple of more administrative points that that are that are done, we'll have this in place and be able to move forward from there. So our line of effort as it relates to training, training is something that we always have done and will continue to do even as it relates to our supervisory and management training. This is something that we where we train at our state level, we train at our federal level, and even at the executive level of training. For example, like the FBI National Academy, we we have officers that are lieutenant above and rank that are eligible to receive that training. And then as far as the supervisory and management training, in each in each category, there are three levels of trainings for supervisors and three levels of training for management that our officers are able to receive that enables them to to grow and develop and improve their their skill set and their knowledge base as they work in the field of providing services to the men and women at our department as well as to the citizens in our community. In addition to that, we're we developing our internal training that's designed specifically for our current supervisors as well as our new supervisors. In this training, our supervisors will receive a reminder or or even an awareness communicated to them as as it relates to them doing their job on a day-to-day basis based on job-related requirements. So this training will take place on an annual basis as it is conducted within our training division. And so as we continue with our training line of effort, as I stated, our training division conducts our training in-house. Of course, our officers are certainly eligible to receive training outside of our training division, and they receive training on a regular basis. And matter of fact, you'll see a budget increase on that as well regarding training because we have a very, very young department and a lot of people in different positions. And so training is what's needed to be able to bring our men and women up to speed as to what needs to take place. But we will continue to review our training because the training that's conducted in-house is conducted by certified instructors. These instructors are certified through the state of Georgia. And through this certification process, for example, if there's training regarding a general topic, we we have officers who have a general instructor certification. We have officers who have firearms instructor certification. We have officers who have defensive tactics certifications and and so on. So we will certainly ensure that all of our instructors have the proper credentials as they go forward providing training to all of our employees. And then in order to ensure that we have an organization where men and women receive the opportunity to develop even more, we're going to implement a junior leadership training program. And in this training program, we will look at those individuals who are corporals and sergeants and work with them to develop them as they go forward in the department, as they continue throughout their careers and prepare them for their next level in the department. So regarding community engagement, and you've heard me say a lot about community engagement. And so as we work at this line of effort on community engagement, we want to make sure that as we develop our written strategic, comprehensive plan on community policing, that those strategies will definitely reflect what we need to do from an ongoing standpoint within our department. We will ensure that we continue to interact with our community and work at communicating to our community members various public safety initiatives like our ongoing community needs and ensuring that our community is aware as to what should take place when they're out and about, or what should their interactions be? We want to make our community members aware. And so they have a great understanding as to what should take place. And we will certainly make sure that the strategic plan in that regard, the comprehensive plan regarding community policing is something that's that includes those efforts. And as we continue to research and find best practices for our community policing uh plan, we will continue to ensure that we put a plan in place that represents our department so that in the so that we'll be able to go forward and be an even greater help to the citizens in our community. In addition to that, we will ensure that personnel from our from all divisions in our department, we'll we'll continue in what we're already doing, and that is ensure that we have face-to-face interactions with our community to 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 show our community that we want to hear from them. We want to work every day at building trust with our community members so they feel comfortable communicating with us. And and we want to hear the concerns, so we'll be able to help problem solve in various neighborhoods that we come in contact with. And and we know that through our neighborhood watch programs that we've already established and seek to establish even more, the research shows that as neighborhood watch programs are put in place in neighborhoods, the these those neighborhoods see a decrease in crime in in those particular areas over the long run. And we will continue to work at strengthening our interaction, our our relationships with various entities external to our department. Recently, we met with a group of individuals who were recipients of the Crime Prevention Grant. And so we communicated with them in a ways so that we'll be able to continue partnering with them and give them some ideas and some thoughts and suggestions as we work together to 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 strengthen what we're doing and bring about an awareness as to what's taking place as it relates to crime and violent crime, gun violent crimes that that we see occur in our community. And so in doing that, we we want to bring about an awareness as it relates to poverty and as it relates to deficiencies in in education or deficiencies in in healthcare or mental health-related situations where there are deficiencies. And so and we we also want to bring about an awareness where there's easy access to firearms from from those individuals who are at risk for using it for the wrong reasons. So we want to be able to continue to partner with our community groups as we work together to bring about a safer community. And of course, we we research the International Association of Chiefs of Police and regarding regarding community safety and and crime strategies for to ensure community safety. And the International Association of Chiefs of Police states that safety, community safety, is everybody's responsibility. And it also states that crime prevention is everybody's business. And and as we take as we take on that mindset here and work together with our community, we'll be able to collaboratively collaborate, we're at reducing crime, gun violent crimes in our community as we address those areas. Because as we've seen in the previous report, even through KIRVIOLANCE, those areas where there's a high rate of poverty, it it mirrors those areas that are identified as high crime areas in our community. And so as we're able to effectively address these concerns, we should be in a better position as we work towards reducing crime in our community. And of course, we'll continue to work towards our producing our social media platforms to communicate with our community in a significant or high-profile public safety-related incidents. And so as we communicated our mission statement earlier, we we want to understand, want everyone to understand that our lines of effort that we've communicated will put us in a position to be able to move forward as we work towards and understand and understand that that's a process. This will be a process, not overnight, to get to where we need to go towards reducing crime and ensuring that operationally within our department, we're where we need to be as we provide services internally to the men and women at the police department as well as externally to our citizens. And so I have in this presentation from, or rather, in this assessment report from Justin Hughes, there were over seventy recommendations. What I've communicated to you are our areas of priority that we're seeking to address. Now, I do have a handout that Command Sergeant Malone will distribute to our clerk of counsel to give to our mayor, to the council members as well. And it details more specifically how our department will proceed in working on these recommendations as communicated by this assessment report. And so I will ensure that the men and women in our department are certainly aware of this presentation, certain and that they are certainly aware of what needs to take place and how we need to work together as we go forward to ensure we work through these recommendations and make our city an even safer place as we go forward. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Chief, I want to express to you my condolences and I'm sure the condolences of other members of the council on the recent loss of one of our officers. It was quite a blow and we thank you for for what you have done in that area. I have a number of questions about the the presentation. And one of the first one of them goes back to the supplement, increasing it to ten thousand plus. You said that you wanted to do that in April. Do you do you have a figure how much that will cost?
Well, actually, what I want to do in April is implement the fifteen hundred dollar retention bonus for April for the men and women, the sworn officers, as well as our emergency communication, our emergency communication officers, nine one one. I would like to implement that in April. Now, the the five thousand dollar additional amount for our sworn personnel, that's that's a cost of at the numbers we have with four hundred and forty-four budgeted positions, that's going to be about, give or take a couple of numbers, about two point two million dollars. And of course, that's something that has to be sustainable as well. And that's why I said, I know we're going through the budget process, and so that's something that I would like for us to look at a little closer to see how or if we can go about and get that done.
Well, the the budget for FY twenty-four will be adopted July one, but you are looking to implement this prior to the new fiscal year budget. Is that, am I correct in that?
So what I'm looking to implement now to to start next month in April is an opportunity for our nine one, our nine one one emergency communication officers and our sworn police officers to receive a fifteen hundred dollars retention bonus on a quarterly basis. That will be retroactive to January first of this year, and that will last throughout this year. So everyone is on payroll at the end of the, at the end of the quarter will be able to receive that fifteen hundred dollar retention bonus. So that's what I'm looking to implement now. And I and I realize the pay supplement piece and other parts that I talked about will have to be discussed more as we're in our budget cycle.
And I'm I'm assuming that all of these figures that you have given us today that are increases in costs to the department, including salary and technology and all that other stuff, are things that you have included in your budget proposal for FY twenty-four?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the questions that I have that I have been asked is the nine one one Um, one of the questions that I have that I have been asked is, um, the nine-one-one operators, are they at this point considered general government employees?
They are general government employees who are certified emergency communication officers. They have to go to Forsyte and take a course there to certify them to be an emergency communication officer. So while they are general government employees, but they do have to obtain that certification to be an emergency communication officer.
Um, the, uh, hundred and fifty dollar car, uh, supplement, that was a monthly figure, right? Hundred and fifty is a monthly figure that you're looking at?
Yes, ma'am. Our pay cycle rotates on a twenty-eight day cycle. So my request is that, that one hundred and fifty dollars is paid every twenty-eight days or at the end of the pay cycle.
Um, you know, we had, um, we've had quite a bit of conversation around this table about, um, the car, uh, allowance and so forth for those officers who live in Alabama. Um, and the, the problem, as you stated, is that once they cross that, uh, state line, the liability insurance, you know, goes nuts.
That's right, that's right.
Um, and we have tried, uh, our council has tried very hard to get our legislative delegation to talk with, uh, the folks in Alabama about can't we do something not only for Columbus, but for other, uh, cities that are on the border of the state that may have the same problem, you know? Um, the folks on the East Coast that go into Sa- uh, South Carolina and that sort of thing. So anything that we can do along that line, uh, I think, uh, would be very helpful.
Yeah, just, just so you know, we have been in conversation with Chris Carr, the Attorney General. Uh, our delegation has passed a, uh, local legislation resolution to show support of this conversation with the Alabama Attorney General, and that's ongoing right now.
Good, good. That's one of the things that would certainly help, um, i- in this issue. Do you happen to know how many, uh, how, how much that would cost us? How many, um, officers we have that, that live in Alabama and drive their ca- could drive their cars?
The officers that live, Alabama residents that we have, and of course, that, that will fluctuate. But we have currently about fifty-eight employees that lives in Alabama, and that would be about eighty-seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, uh, one of the, um, issues that you brought up was this, uh, was the childcare benefit. Um, can you tell us a little more about how that would work and how much that would cost and what you, what do you see in that area?
Well, as I communicated with our retention committee, those members there are seeking to, to be able to just have the opportunity to, to take their child to a childcare provider and there not be a cost associated with that for them. And now, so, and, and I communicated to them that that's something that we, we, we definitely have to take a deeper dive into because we have to assess and see, you know, whi- which facilities that would be willing, if any, would be willing to, to allow that, if any. And then we would have to see, you know, based on that information, how many officers would want to take advantage of that opportunity. And so that's something that our retention committee, they'll be researching even more to bring back additional information in that regard.
Okay. Um, and, um, uh, lastly, I guess, the, um, have, have you met with or do you plan to meet with, um, the officers in the department to go through some of this with them so that they will know what's, what's being proposed and so forth?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so, so what I would do is, is through our, we, we have annually, I meet with all the supervisors and communicate our, even our previous strategic plan that was communicated. But even with this, we'll be able to hopefully get an excerpt of this presentation and be able to u- utilize our social media and allow all of our officers to receive this information in detail as it was presented and so that, and then continue to, to, I will continue to visit the precincts and the, the, uh, briefings for our investigators and officers and our support side as well. So that as they receive this, this presentation, I will still be able to go there to answer whatever specific questions that they have as it relates to going forward.
Well, I, I would encourage you, strongly encourage you, uh, to, um, meet with the, the officer that's on the street, uh, a- along with your supervisors and so forth to, uh, present some of this plan to them so that, um, everybody knows what we're talking about.
Exactly. And that's what I, that's what I'll be doing.
That, that would be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor, uh, Counselor Barnes? Excuse me. Counselor Barnes?
Thank you. Chief, operationally, and we know everything takes money. And that's, this body's business to, to support the initiatives that you've brought forth. But speaking operationally, with what you presented, um, you pretty much have hit every ticket, what I expected to happen here. And I just want to go through some things that you've talked, and just for you to reiterate for me, because these things are really important. Um, the fact that you are going to be freeing up at crime scenes, um, supplementing those post-certified officers that could be doing other things and having civilians do the job.
Right.
Is huge. And, and I think that's one of the things I think may have come up, I think I saw it in the Justin Hughes report. That, that's huge, a huge step, because civilians can be trained to that, to do that, without sacrificing post-certified officers that could be doing other things. So I appreciate that, that's, and I, that, this is something that I've heard, um, mentioned, um, in the community, let me just put it that way. The second thing that really hit the mark with me with, with the number of officers who have left with a lot of experience going out the door. From the standpoint, you only, there's book learning and there's experience.
Right.
And when you see a lot of the young faces out there now that are, uh, in the blue and whites, when you said develop internal train, training for current and new supervisors, that's huge. Because you've got to double up now.
Right.
And concentrate on training for the lack of experience that some of the officers have. And I see some of my military here smiling and laughing. They know that the one thing you've got to have in leaders, you've got to have experience. Nothing trumps experience. So. Now, just from being on council, and I know a lot of these counselors will amen what I'm saying, because they have neighborhood watch organizations throughout. Wherever you, you have a neighborhood watch, in my district and some of the other districts of these counselors, it lowers the crime rate because safety starts at the individual level. Amen, right? Uh, it starts at the individual level. And so the civilian population have to assist the police department. And the proof is in the pudding. In, in my, in my district, where I have a viable neighborhood watch, they're on automatic pilot. They call when things are happening. You've gotten calls.
Yes, sir.
And, and you have a very good crew with, uh, uh, that, that worked in neighborhood watch. It's proven to, to work, and I'm really glad that you're putting more emphasis. And this is, is your personnel from all divisions, all divisions, attend at least one community meeting per quarter. That's crucial, because it allows the individuals in your department to get face-to-face for specific things that might be, what might, uh, be on Celia Drive may not be i- in another area. So what I'm saying is that, that's, and I would like to, um, you have a quarter. If we could discuss this here, because I'm talking, repetition is the mother of study. The more individuals go into these areas and center in on those specific problems that they have eyes and ears on, the lower the crime rate. And so that, that's another huge thing there. Um, and of course, uh, I'm the last one to talk about social media, because I don't know anything about all these computers and stuff, but I'm learning, and social media is the key. Getting our social, besides, if you can't have the staff, you get interjection to the staff, social media is huge, letting people know, and then having individuals, which I'm learning now to do, where they can, um, somebody help me out with the word, where somebody's doing something, they can reply, what is it? Can reply to your comment. Come on, all these computer people, somebody help me. There you go. Whatever it is, there, there you go. Thank you, Pat. Appreciate that. Because I see it on my show where people ask me a question while I'm talking. Thank you. Appreciate it. Social media, that's huge too, because you want to, it makes, it invests the community in what your job is doing. And let you, let them know that you are, uh, uh, attainable, your officers, your personnel. We're all working together against crime. And I think I got another one here somewhere. That pretty much drafted up. I'm happy with this here, because this is what you call being proactive rather than reactive. And, and it. So I, so I deeply appreciate.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, all the effort that you put into this, you and your staff. Because you can have, like I said at the last meeting, you can have the best uptown or downtown, what we call it now uptown, I think, uptown. You can have the zip line, you can have the, uh, what do you call the water thing? Thank you. Uh, so y'all know, it's not dementia, it's called sometimer. Sometimes I remember things, not Alzheimer, just sometimes. Okay, there you go. This is, this is getting what the community wants to hear. Really, I'll be honest with you, because everyone knows that everyone's been concerned, but this is a really proactive approach. I'm happy with this here, and I'm sure a lot of other people who are watching here are happy as well. Appreciate the work.
Thank you, sir.
And I, like I said, as Judy was saying, everything. Ev- ev- everything takes that green piece of paper with our good dead presidents on it. But I know everyone in, in, around these other counselors and I realize how important safety is for all of our constituents, and I know that you'll get, uh, the support, whatever we can get.
Thank you, sir. Thank, thank you, Counselor. Uh, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good job, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Just want to walk through a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. On the personnel, uh, suggestions that you've provided for us, several of them obviously are going to require some financial assessments and, uh, see where we are with that. A couple of them that I'm familiar with will, uh, will require actuarial review and, uh, the cost analysis there, particularly the revising the retirement of sworn officers going from sixty, seventy, and eighty percent. Um, and also, also adding the, uh, the nine-one-one officers or the, the nine-on-one personnel to the, to the Public Safety Retirement Pay Plan. That would require some, and I know you're probably thinking at, at no cost to them, but obviously there's going to be a cost. And, uh, there may be a partnership there, there may be some things we have to discuss to play that out. But I just wanted to put that out there for, for you and the public and, uh, let, let everyone know this, this isn't just moving ages around. This is, this is a big change to a pension plan that is actuarial study, actuarially studied and set in, set in that way. So it, it takes, it takes a lot of movement there to get that done, so.
Yes, sir.
But thank you for being here today. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Huff?
Chief, great job, great job. Uh, presentation was on point. Um, one question on sharing, you said sharing of real-time information. What type of technology will you need for that to happen so that the officers will be on the same page at the same time?
Right. So, so just to be clear with that, that information is through our CAD, our computer aid dispatch and our motor data terminal. So that's something that is currently in the works now, as we work with our vendor who provides that service. But that's, that's going to include some upgrades as we get to that point. So that officers will be able to receive that information in the field as they check a name on, on the individual, whoever they're investigating. They'll be able to check that name and when they put the name in, they'll be able to see that picture of that individual.
Okay, okay. So that would mirror something like what we normally see on the television show? Where they're going back and forth? Uh, I'm just having fun. Uh, the radios, uh, what type of radios will you need?
Well, this, this radio interoperability upgrade would take place with our current radio system.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of the way the radios are programmed or the way they are keyed. And of course, they use a lot of the communication, the language for the radios. But, so in essence, we're just waiting on Alabama to key their radios so we can be able to move forward with this process. And this is something that we've been working on, and we expect that to come on board real soon.
Okay. Will that tie you in with the, uh, Georgia State Patrol and everybody else that comes in the area?
Yes. So as we have Georgia State Patrol in our jurisdiction here, we will be able to communicate with them, and we, we'll communicate with each other through that radio, uh, frequency.
Okay. My last question is on, you mentioned, uh, the gang analysts?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that going to be a person or a group?
Right. So we're, we're requesting gang analysts, civilian positions to be added. We have this in the budget. We add it, we, we are requesting that to be added through our civilian staff so that we'll be able to work towards transferring our gang analysis and intelligence unit from the Office of Professional Standards to the Bureau of Investigative Services.
Okay. And the hundred and fifty dollar supplement, you say it's eighty-four to eighty-seven?
About eighty-seven hundred dollars, based on fifty-eight employees.
Fifty-eight, okay. Okay. Great presentation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, thanks, Chief, for the presentation. I did have a question in reference to the education. I know I've been trying to get information from NACO, um, to help all of our CCG employees in reference to, um, reimbursement for, you know, the educational expense. My one question is, is education a requirement for promotion within CPD?
Yes. So in order to receive the appointment to corporate, the individual could arrive there one of two ways. One being that they have an associate's degree with two years of service. The second way is four years of service without the associate's degree, but have supervision levels one, two, and three, as I spoke about earlier. And then in order to, to achieve the rank of sergeant, the individual needs to have at least the associate's degree. And for lieutenant, captain, and on up, you'd have the bachelor's.
So it is part of the, the actual?
Yes.
Okay. I was thinking that we had removed that part, but I just wanted to.
Was the master's degree requirement.
Okay.
That, that was placed as preferred instead of required.
Required.
For the rank of deputy chief or above.
Thank you for clearing it up.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager? Did you have your light on?
Uh, I did. Mayor Protem, I really wanted to thank the, the chief and his team for, um, the, um, the presentation. I intentionally, uh, did not look at your presentation as it was posted on Friday. Uh, I didn't want to see it until today. And so today is my first opportunity, and I told you, Mayor, I would not look at it. I don't want to see it. And so hearing it here, him here today and seeing, uh, or receiving a copy is the first time I've ever put my eyes on it. I, I just wanted to share that. And, uh, I must say, uh, in listening to you today and then this document that I look forward to reviewing, it's much more detailed than just your PowerPoint. Much more detailed, it appears. But wanted to thank you and your team for a very, very. it appears. But wanted to thank you and your team for a very, very thoughtful strategic plan that you were able to put together in just thirty days. And so I simply wanted to say thank you. Job well done. I look forward to reviewing it. But I do want to take the opportunity to thank the men and women of the Columbus Police Department who have worked under severe shortage situation. And have done a hell of a job. And so the mayor sent me, I believe it was March first, and Mayor, I responded to you late Saturday night, but you sent me this list of things that the police chief was going to or has talked about today. And I shared with you that I would meet with our finance team to discuss that list of things that the chief sent to you and you sent to me. And I met with the team, I believe it was Thursday of this past week. I sent the information to them in advance that you sent to me, and we just had an opportunity to meet, I believe on Thursday or Friday. And we all know Finance Director Angelica Alexander. She had reviewed that very extensive list that you heard presented by the police chief today. And her response, along with Deputy City Manager Hodges' response to me in that meeting, and I had HR Director there and Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, was that there's no way we can sustain this if we do it. And, and so I asked, yeah, what, what do, what do you recommend? What are your options? We don't have a choice of considering the situation, not just here in Columbus, Georgia, but in Atlanta and Augusta and Savannah and across this nation when it comes to public safety. We don't have a choice of doing nothing. And, and so I told them, because they didn't have any options, we can't sustain it. And I said, you need to go back and you need to bring me some options. And, and so they did come back, the Finance Director with options, and she emailed those options to me on Saturday night. And it was around ten o'clock or so on Saturday night. And, and she said to me that, and you have the email, I was trying to find it, I think you said you had the email, but what she said to me is that what we propose is to reinstate for Columbus Police Department and nine-one-one operators, the fifteen hundred dollar a quarter supplement that we recently discontinued when we implemented the pay plan. But reinstate the fifteen hundred dollar supplement, and we're only going to say that for twelve months. In other words, make it retroactive to the beginning of the year if they're on payroll, March thirty-first, they get the first quarter supplement if they're on payroll at CPD. And continue that through January. And she said to me in the email that I sent to you for, excuse me, Saturday night, Mayor, it would take five days of reserve if we did that for CPD for twelve months. And suggested that we go to the three thousand dollar, I believe it's-
Three thousand dollar relocation? Yes, sir. Relocation?
Relocation?
Yes, sir.
Three, three thousand a fat? Because I don't have the email, I didn't pull it up. But she outlined what we could do now, that, and, and then the employee referral, I believe, of six hundred dollars, but what we could do now for the twenty-twenty-three calendar year, and then we would have to come back if that's something that's continued, but see how the recruitment retention goes. And that allows them a, at least nine more months to recruit, retain, and see how that goes to determine whether you go into another year or not. And of course, it would require council approval. And so, but that's the short term, but the long term, and, and so that's what staff, finance recommended. They've looked at the fiscal note on it and they recommend that, and I certainly support their recommendation to reinstate the fifteen hundred dollars a quarter and recommend that to you. But long term, all that other, all these other things that he has shared in this report today, I think Mayor Protem Allen hit the nail on the head. It would take an actuarial review, study to determine the fiscal note and the affordability. And certainly I agree with that, but long term, all of those things that he notes, I could tell you just from our finance staff would be a heavy lift. But there's something that we, there are things that we should look at in the upcoming budget and in years to come, but we've got to do the due diligence to make sure that we can not only commit monies now, but sustain it. But the short term would be while we are able to do that, look at long term, do the actuarial review, it would allow us that time and, but at least we're doing something now. And so I wanted to share my thoughts with you. And, and I know it's short notice, but send it to the mayor on Saturday night and copy the police chief on Saturday night. And so the short, I, I think we should look at all those things long term that he has talked about in the next budget, twenty-twenty-four budget, and then beyond. But the short term, we need to do something now, and that would be reinstate would be my recommendation, the fifteen hundred dollars quarterly for CPD officers and nine-one-one operators. But thank you, sir, for this very thoughtful plan. And again, thank you to the men and women of the Columbus Police Department for all you do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation and for the ideas about things that we can do to make things better for your officers. Just one fast question to make sure I understand something that you said. I think you mentioned ten strategic directions?
Yes.
In the, in the PowerPoint slides, is that the organization of these things that we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to make sure I was straight. Thank you. It's all ahead.
All right. That appears to be all the questions. Chief, thank you for the efforts. And thank you, command staff, for what they did as well.
Right. Thank, thank you, sir. And certainly I'm appreciative to my command staff, our retention committee as they work, and the other men and women of the police department as they work to, to provide ideas, thoughts, and suggestions to our retention committee and our command staff as I assign different areas of those strategic directions for them to dissect and, and find our way forward. So I'm appreciative to our entire staff and the mayor for your support and council members for your support.
And we did have a, a consultant that was just kind of helping to frame some of that as well. So, so I know it's, it's a good product. Thank you for everything you've done. All right. All right. We'll move, we'll move on now to the city attorney's agenda. We still have business to do, so if you would, please save your conversations for outside. All right. City Attorney, why don't you go ahead and please?
Thank you, Mayor. Morning, everybody. Do have a fairly short business agenda today. First item up is a zoning hearing for property at twenty-nine, twenty-five Manchester Expressway. This is the old Best Buy property, and they are requesting to go to a general commercial district for fitness center applicant is Fitness Ventures, and Mr. Mize is here on their behalf. Planning is here. Are there any questions around the table on this? It's recommended for approval?
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right. Is any, Mr. Mize, you don't have to come up. We'll ask anybody in the audience. Is, are anybody here for or against on this proposal? All right. We will vote on this in two weeks, Mr. Mize, at the five-thirty meeting. Thank you for being here. Next item up is a resolution. This will allow a special exception for daycare type three at twenty-three, thirteen Ellen Avenue. Recommended approval. Is Reverend Powell or anybody here with us? Okay. Here with the applicant. Are there any questions of the applicant? Anybody around the table have a question?
I, it's not a question. I did, I did receive an email from a gentleman that lived on Ellen, and he requested it not be approved based on his perception of crime in, in the area and on the street. So I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll just, I'll just tell you that I did receive that. He asked me to please state it at the meeting. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this a daycare to be run by the church?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this special exception? We've got Reverend Powell here. We, we can take action on this today, Mayor.
Motion second to approve the special exception. Any discussion? Our hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes.
All right. Thank you, sir. That has been approved. Our last resolution would establish a qualifying fee for the special election Muskogee County School Board.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution, establish that. Yes.
This is for special election to fill a vacancy on the Muskogee County School Board, District Seven. The special election will be held on June the twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, and the qualifying fee is fixed today by council at ninety dollars.
All right. There is a motion second. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved.
All right. Of course, that is a pro-rated qualifying fee. The only other request we had, Mayor, were for an executive session on real estate acquisition and disposal and personnel. That's all we had listed.
Okay. All right. We'll move into the, yes, I'm sorry, Counselor Barnes.
City Attorney, I had two requests for convenience stores in my district. One had six already, one within about three blocks of each other. The other one, they wanted to put in the middle of Pembroke. We need to do a relook at these convenience stores. We all have gone through this here, every councilor up here. We need to do a relook on that ordinance and slow this down. Two in my district.
Oh, we can.
And, and one in the middle of a, of a residential area. But fortunately, we stopped it. But we need to do a relook. It's affecting every councilor up here, all the neighborhoods. And I'm going to be honest, my, my opinion is enough, is enough.
Well, that's something.
Six within, six, and then one within a block of each other. And so I, I know you require, but we need to, we need to take that first step now.
There are a couple of options. We can consider, of course, a moratorium on that type of a license, but you can also consider some distance restrictions, but we need to have the head of planning and City Manager, Deputy City Manager Hodges involved in looking at distance restrictions and a possible moratorium. Those, those are things to consider.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, he was just, for the counselor, he suggested we do maybe a moratorium while we're waiting on having planned and take a look at all of the requirements.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Counselor Tucker?
And I echo what Counselor Barnes stated. Actually, myself and Director Will Johnson and Counselor Barnes have been looking at some ordinances that have been proposed and Macon just did an update and references, echo what you were saying, with a, a parameter that would be distance that you can do. But if we could actually get with Director Johnson and yourself and Counselor Barnes, that way we can actually come up with something and share with the council. That way we can get an approval within the next month or so. I don't think the moratorium, remember, I tried to do that before with the moratorium, and we had to pack house because people had already did some things in progress. So I just think we need to come up with a, a good ordinance that will basically restrict that distance that you can put different fueling centers.
Yeah, and you can do that because that's a neutral type restriction, not related to any first amendment, first amendment content rights. But we need to see what Macon did. You can look at a thousand feet, two thousand feet, things like that.
Yeah. And we could also include some of the stuff, the items that Sheffield, Michelle had actually sent within that ordinance as well. So kind of combine.
These will be text amendments, so they'll have to go through the zoning process.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Counselor Barnes?
Can we also tweak, and I think I saw, on the number of machines that they can have in there? Because I'm going to be honest with you, for a lot of the senior citizens that, that go there, it's intimidating when you see so many people crowded around there, them going in. They're thinking safety. And so.
Now that, there's a draft on that ready.
That's what I'm asking Michelle to incorporate that.
You just answered that. Then that's, that's exactly what I-
There's a draft on the limiting the number of machines ready that we could actually bring at the next meeting. That's not a zoning item. So if you want to limit to six machines, we could bring that at the next meeting.
That's good.
Okay. Yeah, that's been ready because we've talked to folks at the state level about that.
Okay. All right. And we will move into the public agenda, and I'll remind you, everybody will have, you have five minutes and start after you state your name and your address for the record. And we will remind everybody, please show the respect that, to the folks at the lectern that they show you when you're speaking. And if there are any outbursts, we've asked the bailiffs to just escort those individuals outside until the public agenda is over and then let them come back in. So we'd ask you to exhibit decorum and be, be civil to one another. And first, on the public agenda is Mr. Marvin Broadwater Senior regarding the comments related to the chief. related to the chief police. Mr. Broadwater?
My name is Marvin Broadwater Senior. I reside at three thousand four Slippery Rock Court, Columbus, Georgia, three-one-nine-zero-nine. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, and all in attendance. I'm here to speak on two topics: respect and response. Approximately thirty days ago, on February fourteenth, I sit here in these chambers embarrassed by what I observed from our elected leaders. I have applauded you when you have done well for our citizens. And I have stood here at this podium giving constructive remarks when I thought you should have gone in a different direction with issues. On this day, I felt a deep sense of disappointment in my city council. So I waited until the next morning to respond. I crafted an email to voice my concerns and issues. This email was sent on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six-oh-one a.m. And it reads as follows. "Good morning, Mr. Mayor and my representatives to the Columbus, Georgia City Council. I decided to wait at least twenty hours before constructing this email. As I observed the proceedings of the February fourteen, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three City Council meeting, I departed embarrassed by the vicious, venomous victimizations remarks made by a few of our city council members. These remarks were verbalized after the Columbus Police Department assessment was presented. I was immediately reminded of the hollow halls of this nation's Capitol Building during the most recent president's State of the Union address. Several congress members jeered and called the president a liar. Whether you agree or disagree with the leader, there is such a thing called public decorum from our leaders. We all realize your position is most difficult. As you must not only satisfy your constituents, as a leader, you must do what is right as a Christian. A real leader must never forget that. The word leadership was mentioned forty-three times during and after the presentation with negative comments. As I sat in my chair, as these remarks were being made, I ordered, make a motion for a written report with a timeline and suspense, suspense date. The remarks made seemed to be prescripted and continued after the first negative comments. Finally, a military mind prevailed as Councilman House made a motion for just this. I love Columbus and its people, but when our local leaders attack a lead city employee in a public forum, we have lost our democracy and our democratic way of life, in my opinion. Immediately after the non-objective presentation was made, I asked the young lady making the presentation, can I get a copy of the report? Her surprisingly immediate response was, you must ask the city council for the report. I explained to her in a democracy which we are. And from one who has fought, killed, and been permanently injured in the name of our democracy, every citizen should have an opportunity to, to, to view a report prior to the presentation as this was not during the public agenda. I would humbly ask for the following: send me a copy of the non-objective report. Remind council members there are ways to address their concerns without publicly attacking any city leader or employee. As always, thank you for your continued service to the greater Columbus area. Marvin Broadwater. Only one councilman responded. I have four. I have two citywide, I have a district, and I have only one responding, and I thank you, Councilman House. That's a failing grade. That's an F. I have four. And y'all know I come sit here and I applaud you of the job that you do. But you've got to be more responsive to your citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Broadwater. All right, next, next is Mr. Paul Olson regarding the Jensen Hughes Assessment Report: Crime Prevention Program, Police Pay and Increase in Insurance Rates.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Paul Olson. I live at one-three-eight-three-zero Uptoy Lane. People need to stop finger pointing at Chief Blackman and instead work with him to make Columbus a safer city to live and thrive in. Right now, the criminals are laughing at us because we're not working together. Former mayor, uh, mayoral candidate John Anchor initiated and financed Jensen Hughes, which is headquarters out of Baltimore, Maryland, with a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Mr. Olson, that's, I, I don't think that's correct, and I, so I, I would ask you not to use this anchors.
What do you mean? It was in WTVM. It was notated there.
Well, they, they had it, they had it wrong. I'll be glad to talk with you afterwards. I don't wanna interrupt your time, but you can continue.
Okay. Anyway, it's headquartered out of Baltimore, Maryland with a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars from local businessmen to scrutinize Chief Blackman's performance and make demands from him. Those businessmen were probably the same people who contributed to his failed campaign, which lost by landslide. We are left in the dark on purpose because these contributors are anonymous and receive one-hundred percent tax exemption. John Anchor created this sub-agency under the auspices of this nonprofit community foundation of Chadu Chi Valley, which is considered a five-one-C-three. If their names were made public, then everyone would know this assessment is politically motivated. Therefore, this nonprofit would be in violation and thereby lose their nonprofit status. John Anchor, I ask you why Baltimore? Baltimore last year had three-hundred-and-thirty-three murders and six-hundred-and-eighty-eight wounded for a total of a thousand twenty-one casualties. Baltimore is just two-and-a-half times larger than, in population than Columbus, Georgia. At one time, they had a population of nearly a million. In the last decade, they lost thirty-five thousand residents. During John Anchor's mayoral race, I had a telephonic conversation with him and he told me at that time that he was friends with Lieutenant Dow, FOP president, and also Byron Hickey, who served as his advisor to him. The FOP prior to endorsing John Anchor said they would not endorse either mayoral candidate. Then contradicted their word and overwhelmingly voted for Anchor and charged Mayor Henderson as a failed administration with a no-confidence vote. Also Byron Hickey recently condemned Chief Blackman with losing a hundred and police officers in an interview with WTVM. Through an open, through my open records request, Chief Blackman has lost thirty-six police officers, so it's not a hundred, uh, Byron Hickey. Uh, Hickey also said many of them went to the sheriff's department. What Hickey doesn't say is how many of them received pay raises and promotions in their transition and city council needs to make an investigation into this matter. So the last thing we need to do is have one law enforcement taken away from the other and given them pay raises. You can find it, uh, both Lieutenant Dow and Byron Hickey in a photo op in their endorsement of John Anchor on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, in news, uh, uh, real WRBL and Hickey standing next to John Anchor on WTVM when they're endorsing the FOP, okay? This assessment failed to mention the obstructing of our police, uh, from surrendering their prisoners for up to eight hours, uh, to deputy sheriffs at the jail. Uh, this is in violation of OCGA forty-two-dash-four-dash-twelve penalty for not receiving persons charged with or guilty of an offense. Those deputy sheriffs can also be charged with dereliction of duty. You know, right now, you know, we're receiving hundreds of, uh, prisoners from other counties and he had no problem with that. And then he has to be, have a contention with our own police officers and it just did not look good at all.
Mr. Olson, state the fact.
It also failed to address the defunding of the police by diverting twenty million dollars of the old lost sales tax to the reserve fund when the police need pay raises desperately in order to recruit and retain. Right now, we have a hundred-and-twenty days of reserve in the reserve balance and to get, uh, keep our credit rating at the top level, we need only sixty, okay? And that twenty million equates to almost fifty days, so we'd still have seventy days and we still have the same, that. So let's be more proactive than reactive. I also would say in this assessment, they didn't address the crime stoppers because I talked to Seth Brown and he said the crime stoppers is not involved anymore. I say we need to put out bounties on these criminals who are drug dealers, running, uh, chop shops, stealing cars, so on and so forth. And we need to put that back into motion. Uh, they did not recommend police precincts in our parks. They did, however, recommend transparency of Chief Blackman's promotion plan when you, mayor and city council, had already approved of Chief Blackman's promotion plan and process in the past. We likewise would like to know who you are, who your contributors are, John Anchor, but what do you expect when Jensen Hughes is headquartered out of a crime-ridden Baltimore? Their, their fiduciary responsibility that Jensen and Hughes is to, only to John Anchor, which speaks volumes. Their a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars would have been better spent towards a police precinct at Lake Bottom. That's my presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Olson. All right. Next is Ms. Teresa Alameen representing Southern Anti-Racism Network regarding public safety.
Teresa Alameen, thirty-nine, eleven Steam Mill Road. Um, what you're receiving, uh, is an open records request provided by the Muskogee, uh, uh, County Sheriff's Office. Uh, it's a list of the February evictions. Uh, and I've been making the connection with you over email about the relationship between poverty and public safety. And I want to reinforce, uh, that relationship. Uh, the chief's presentation was not something that just came together in thirty days. As a person who does strategic thinking and strategic planning, that has been developed over a much longer period of time, that deep thinking. And I think, uh, that everybody should be grateful, uh, to the chief and his staff. On Thursday, March ninth, in this very room, many of the command staff were here and I got to meet them personally. I had quite a conversation, uh, with Deputy Chief Hastings. He's been with the force since nineteen eighty-six. That level of experience is amazing. This is a city that has so much experience in its employees. And over the twelve years I've been here to see public safety and the changes that have taken place under the previous chief when the high murder counts began. And now to the point where we are now, uh, where the whole community, and I'm so happy that so many people came out today. But the whole community has to stand with this law enforcement community, including the sheriff, uh, Chief ARP at the Muskogee County School District Police Department and the Columbus Police Department to do the kind of community policing that's required at this point. When you look at these evictions, Mr. Garrett, uh, you can see, uh, that one of your zip codes, which is Wilson Homes, by the way, and I just wanna say this about Wilson Homes, Mr. Garrett. I've been trying to work with parents over there. When I asked the chief for an open records request on the number of murders in public housing communities over the past three years, the highest number in public housing, Wilson Homes, Wilson Homes. I have been over there on a Sunday morning where I see the young people dealing drugs out in the open. When they approach my car, I say, I'm not your customer. That's Wilson Homes. So in terms of strategy, there has to be a look at the high poverty areas. That is where hope has been lost and where the children are now engaged in the kind of criminal activity that will ruin their lives. That's what we have to do as a community. At Fawley, at Elizabeth Canyon, Warren Williams murders, in all those places. We have got to do something about poverty. Some years ago, I encouraged Mr. House to buy a book. It costs seventy dollars. You remember, Mr. House, How to Reduce Child Poverty? Sheriff Countryman has the same book. It's an important book for you and your jobs to try to figure out the root cause, how to reduce the root cause of crime, which is poverty. That's what's required of you. And you haven't done it. Some of you have been up there for decades and you just haven't done it. You just haven't done it. We've got to reduce poverty in this community. Thirty percent of children living in poverty. Enough is enough. Enough is enough.
Okay. Counselor Tucker?
I just wanted to echo what Ms. Alameen mentioned in reference to poverty. High po- poverty does equal, um, high crime. I'm trying to see exactly when you started mentioning, mayor, the poverty reduction initiative. I'm gonna ask that we really expedite that initiative and at the next council meeting, I would like to see on the agenda us approving, um, that poverty reduction initiative in moving forward because we have put it on hold. You've been talking about it for over a year. Um, we have the funds through the American Rescue Plan. It is a actual allocation, a line item. We need to move forward. We don't need to wait and, and possibly, as I mentioned to you all, last council meeting in reference to the American Rescue Plan, plan dollars being in jeopardy of a clawback. We need to move forward with some of these projects. And the first one that I would like to see on the agenda next council meeting is the poverty reduction initiative.
We'll put it on there. We, we, uh, there is not been any delay. They've been working on, with, they've been working on, uh, the United Way has been working on identifying the person to hire. And, uh, we have, we have been aggressively working towards that. We've also set up other groups that are looking at, uh, impact on housing, on, uh, inadequate housing on poverty. So, uh, yeah, we'll be glad to give you an update.
I know some, I know some of the things that we talked about, like Counselor, um, Huff mentioned, homeowner occupied rehab. And I understand that that's gonna take a, a little more time to, you know, actually work on that. But just allocating, just like we did with the cure violence, I don't see why it's taking so long for us to.
Well, this is in the second tranche too, so we're, but we, they're trying to hire. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, we are already scheduled to bring the ARP allocations to council at the next meeting. It's already scheduled.
Okay. All right. Next on the public agenda, uh, is Mr. Timothy Veal regarding neighborhood cleanup. Need for a walkway on Head Street and guns in the street. Mr. Veal?
Name is Timothy Veal, ten thirty-nine Brook Road, Columbus, Georgia, three-one-nine-zero-three. I am to the man, to the city council, all my brothers and sisters. Uh, it's same thing. Well, I come in just about the same thing. Now, you know in Columbus, you gotta have fishing lighting to fish. You gotta have lighting to drive. Y'all have a lighting to carry a pistol. Oh, also, uh, I'm proud of my neighbor who I live right off of Bennett Drive. I've got one's a cabin in Brook. And, uh, on Head Street, I complain about that. And on Head Street, I complained about that before. I tried to get some of my neighbors to come down here and say, "Y'all ain't going to do nothing." I said, "I'm coming. I'm going to come back next week or we got next week too with the same thing." Head Street, you knew you'd be a sewer there. But I walked with you because the ditch is so big. Like I said before, you ain't got to do too many digs. Only thing I got to do, just lay the pipe and cover it up just about. Because them kids, you know, they be walking the street in the meantime, you know, they ain't got nowhere to run, nowhere to walk. And them guys, they sometime they drive down like that the grass strip. Also, I like for, maybe pull a camera down on Head Street. They drive so fast. You know, but that, that, that's real safety to have, you know. Thank God, ain't never happened yet, but you know, even the bus driver, he had to yeet. Bad to make it, when you make that turn from Brook to Head Street. So on, on, on the right side, growing up, I think it needed to be a, a walkway there. You know, it ain't, it ain't that long. Far take about two days, you got the right equipment. And also on Cabin Avenue in Clay, you know, that's a dead end right there. You know, it look like a land for you back there. You know, like a, a landlord, he need business. They need to tighten up. Basically, one on Fort Bennett Road there, you know, ready to call for a new school. Look like a hog pen. Now the one down by Walmart, he, he getting back the same way. They need to make people cleaner, they fuck, you know. Other than that, that's basically what I'm concerned about. Basically on Head Street, you need to be a, that time I hate for something to happen, you know, but you need to look at that. You know, I know, I know y'all familiar with it. Get right down there and check it out, how big that ditch is. Also, that'd be a little way for the, when the people get down and cut, cut the grass out.
Thank you. All right, next is Ms. Annette Adams regarding the new Muskogee County Jail. Welcome, Ms. Adams. If you'd state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Annette Adams. I live at 1110 Neil Drive. I was looking on Facebook how there's a very need for a new city jail. And right now, we need one ASAP because they're being turned out on a thing to come back to court, which some people don't, are not honest enough to come back to court, you know. So my idea was the old CCI building that was on Chautauqua Road. That's city property, correct? I believe the address, I'm not sure. It's just something I pulled up real quick because I forgot my phone at home. It's in the rush to get out the door. It's 4441, if you could pull it up on your computers. My daddy used to work there. He worked there 20 years. Before that, he served 20 years in the service, in the Army. That's where I used to go visit my dad. And that's how I know this has got a kitchen. It just needs to be refurbished. It's just real old. Just, there's a lot of things that can be done with this property right here for overfill or make it into a city jail from the county jail. Or you can, like the garage, when they pull in, the police department, they pull in, they have to check them in. Well, if there's an overfill, they can't put them in because there's no more room. And it's a safety feature. And I understand that on both sides, but you're returning people back to the street that can cause harm to any one of us. I mean, there's, people are doing real crazy stuff nowadays that didn't happen when we was children and we was growing up. It's our era is like the last of us, you know. So with that is to refurbish that and maybe for, or have a new city or county jail put out there. Make it really big, just, just for the county because it's kind of like headed out towards the county, right? If I'm not mistaken. I'm getting winded. I'm trying to make my time. If you just work with me on my time because I need to get back to the house. So with that being pretty much said of maybe even putting tents out there and for the time being, then until the property can be built out there, people that are waiting to go to Jackson Diagnostic Center or people that are doing short-term sentencing to go to this property here or the weekends, if you can put a bus stop out there for the weekenders that may not have a car, you know, to catch the bus to be picked up and so forth, you know. Excuse me for saying, you know, it's not proper. And with that being said, you'll have down by the county for Recorders Court, Superior Court and all that to them to stay there. And people that are being charged or just being, coming in, like whenever the police department brings them in, they can stay there for, to do their court hearing. But everybody else can go to the one on Chautauqua Road and just wait it out. Because I'm sure there's people that know how to cook if you just refurbished this inside part. And I can't remember how many inmates it could hold. I think it was like, if it's fixed up, I think it was like 200 or 300. So, I mean, it's an idea because we need something ASAP. And to build a big building, it's going to take years. But they need something now. The city needs something now because we have grown so much. People are moving from all over down here trying to find a safer haven. And it's, they're the issue that was up there probably, you know. I'm not saying they are, but it's just too much. It's too much. And I learned from when I was living in Macon, Georgia, that everything went wrong there. A lot of things went wrong there. They wind up losing their police department behind stuff. And they, the sheriff just took over and it wasn't nice. So I come back home. Because this is why I was born out at Fort Benning, which is soon to be Fort Moore. And I was raised in Columbus. And any questions?
No, ma'am, but I think the city manager may have a... Okay. No, ma'am, but thank you, thank you for putting some thought into that. And we appreciate your, your, your comments. Thank you.
You're welcome. Y'all have a blessed day and week.
You too, ma'am. All right, next is Dr. Chris Harmon regarding public safety and lack of leadership. Welcome, Mr. Harmon. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Chris Harmon. I reside at 1920 Leonard Street, just five houses off of Lake Bottom Park. Thank you, Mayor Henderson and city council members for allowing me to speak this morning. And my mother would probably appreciate the upgrade to doctor. I'm not a doctor.
I thought I missed something, but I was going to be respectful.
Yeah. I'm here this morning out of fear and total frustration with the city, safety of the citizens of Columbus. As a lifelong resident of Columbus, I've watched Columbus go from an average city to an awesome city. I unfortunately was widowed a little over seven years ago. And shortly after that, a lot of my friends suggested that I move to a new city. And my answer was adamantly, absolutely not. Columbus offers so much. We have so many great restaurants. We have the Riverwalk Coca-Cola Space Science Center, our city parks. Columbus Museum, the Columbus State University is such an asset to our city. It brings so much money and people and good talent that we hope will, will stay here after they graduate. And the list goes on. You, as our city leaders, need to protect the investments that so many people have made in our great city. It's time to change the leadership in our police department and get the right person in there to lead this vital department in the right direction. I feel like the current leader we're working with, if the current leader were in a different corporation with the performance the department has shown over the past three years, change would have already been made. I've had the opportunity to speak with many officers lately with all the shootings that we've had and all the crime that we've reported. And I've had time to ask them questions about their jobs and thank them for their jobs. I know I wouldn't want it. I'm not going to put on a Kevlar vest to go out and make what they make. It's not enough. But the ones that I've spoken to have all seemed to feel like that the leadership is not doing the job that it needs to do to get the compensation packages correct, get the benefit package correct, and to retain officers that we so vitally need. You know, when you've got private citizens are hiring companies to study our public safety and private citizens offering rewards to assist the police department in catching these criminals that are simply driving by our city parks and firing guns. These bullets don't discriminate. They don't know who, these bullets don't know who they're going to hit, but eventually they're going to hit someone. What happened at Lake Bottom Park a few weeks ago was nothing but an act of God, that no child was killed. No citizen was killed. And it infuriates me. I'm, I'm tired of it. I'm tired of the neighborhood text messages going off all night long. Did you hear those gunshots? Did you hear this? Did you hear that? My truck's been broken into. You know, vehicles are going to get broken into. That's just going to happen. It usually happens in the summer when the kids are out of school. I'm okay with that. But when you have people riding around and they feel like it's okay to fire a gun into a city park, something's got to happen. I'm tired of it and I'm asking you guys to do something about it. I urge you all to, to make the, a hard decision. It's time to rip the Band-Aid off of this problem and get the leader in here. I'm not sure who paid for the report that the chief of police just turned in and spoke on, but I, I, I think three years is long enough. He should have come in with a plan of action. We had a crime problem when he came in. And we've never heard anything until it's demanded of him to present some, some answers to these problems. It shouldn't take three years. The time's now. And I ask of you all to make a, a hard decision and do what's right for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Next, Ms. Donna Murray regarding affordable housing for the middle class. Welcome, Ms. Murray. If you'd state your name and your address, please, for the record. So you can wait, if you don't, go ahead.
My name is Donna Murray. I live at 920 Latum Court. And I am here to ask that I have been trying to buy a home here for the longest. And as far as my income is considered low to moderate for everyone. Right now, I'm renting. And not just me, but I have friends that have been trying to rent. To look for a home that offer at least two bedrooms, two bathrooms, or three ba, three bedrooms, two bathroom, we're having, we're looking at prices of 1,200, 1,500. And they, here in the state, I vote during this time, but a lot of friends, we are looking for decent homes. That we ought to be able to build houses for people from $800, $900 range to $1,000. Most people can't afford maybe with that, with one paycheck. And a lot of us are single parents trying to find a decent place to live. We just, just do not have to have, this is my first time, so I'm a little nervous.
No, that's fine. Take your time.
This is my first time, but the thing is that we do need decent homes. I don't want to have to live in a place that I'm scared. Our house right now, to try and find us another place during that time has really cost a lot of money. You know, most people do not have $1,500, do not have $1,400 just for rent. You know, we need something. When they talk about poverty, yeah, that's where we are. We at a poverty level, but we can't have. This city is, I, I, I love Columbus, I've been here 20 years. But I would like to have a decent place to live. And I want to be able not just rent, but own a home. We want to own houses, you know, have wealth for our family and things. But I want homes that we can afford. And I, I'm sure that the city can come up with something to help us get those homes that we need. Talk to companies or if not here, ask them would they come and build homes for us. We just don't have to live in places where we scared to come home. I work night shift. And I want to know that I can come home to the house and not be afraid to go in the door and not be afraid where I have to stay, you know, at the time. I don't want to live with burglar bars on the door. You know, I want decent, affordable housing that I can buy, you know. And because of companies that come in and buy up, a lot of the land makes the prices so high that people cannot afford that, you know. And the thing is, the only thing we ask, I will be coming back until, you know, I ask that y'all kind of see if y'all can get something together here in Columbus. Because I'll keep coming, not just me, I'm bringing folks with me until we can find homes for everybody to be able to have something decent, you know, to purchase and to buy, you know, from there. Thank you for giving me this chance to talk.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And, and there are a number of initiatives that are underway because this is a very recognized issue, not just in Columbus, but really across the country. And there's a lot of folks, I mean, it's almost like the, the working poor. They, the rents are so high.
Yes, it is.
That you, I mean, it's actually almost more, a little less expensive to buy in some situations, but then you have to come up with a down payment. So there are some, there are some programs. I know Ms. Elamine has got an organization that's been working on it. And I know that there's a task force in this community that's also been put together and has already met once with a specific goal of addressing the, the affordable housing shortage.
Who is that with?
Ma'am?
Who is that with? What group is that?
The task force is being headed up by Pat Frey, who actually works for, works for the United Way. And they're pulling together a number of different folks. And already had one meeting and they're going to, the, the goal is to come up with a strategic plan to address affordable housing and then to require it be revisited every couple of years.
Yeah, because I'm not alone. I'm talking to friends who need, we're in homes, some homes are so bad until we need to move. We have no choice. We need to move. And we can't because we cannot find a place affordable.
Yes, ma'am.
You know? We can't find a home.
Counselor Tucker?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I, I, I wanted to add also, Ms. Murray, Ms. Donna Murray. The Urban League, they, they have a monthly meeting, a workshop for homeownership. And when you go through that workshop, you get money to put on, towards your down payment. March 25th is the next meeting. Yeah, for the workshop. And I will ask if, you know, we can share, once I get it from Mr. Mosely, from the Urban League, if we can share that information. But it's, it's helpful because you can get up to $15,000 towards your down payment.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. And I will be looking.
Mr. Hughley?
I just wanted to let Ms. Murray know that our Director of Community Reinvestment, Rob Scott, he's waiting out in the lobby to talk to you, okay?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank y'all for giving me the time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, and Ms., Ms. Annette Walker representing MPACS regarding Multicultural Community Organizing Weekly Block Parties. If you would, state your name and your address and we'll start the clock when you do that.
Good morning, council, the mayor. And I definitely want to make sure I recognize all of our service members. I am Annette Walker and I am so proud to say that I am a direct descendant of the Davis Brothers Lumber Company. These are the original founders of Graham and State University and also our church, which is New Prosperity Baptist Church. Okay, New Prosperity Baptist Church. And I would like to have two parts to my presentation. The first part I would like to recognize is the fact that we in our community were going to be having such a big, big name change from Fort Benning to Fort Moore. from Fort Benning to Fort Moore. And the legacy of Fort Moore is family. And that is what I personally would like to say as a transplant here to Columbus, Georgia. Uh, I would like to say that as a community, uh, we want to make sure that our troops, they're gonna feel safe in leaving their families here in Columbus, Georgia, while they are going to put their lives on the line. My oldest brother, James, United States Air Force Vietnam War veteran. My brother David Haines, United States Marines. My sister Deborah Menefee and my daughter-in-law, who's now deceased, the United States National Guard. My brother-in-law Dan Menefee and my son Dominique Clayton, the United States Army. My husband, Mr. Terry Walker, the United States Navy. So when we tell you we are military family, we got that covered. So military is very important to us, and that's why we have, as a community, this is not just about a plan that is on paper. This is about a plan that each and every single person in Columbus, Georgia and the surrounding area, we must take very seriously to transform and renew our mind and make sure that we are a family, uh, community. Now, this is part two of my presentation. I would like to expound upon the part of the community engagement. In order to do the part two, I need each row to have the person who is, should've been in that seat, but please stand up, please. On each row, the first person on that side, and I need the first person on this side. Would you please stand up, please? Each person on each row, first person on each row, on this side and on that side. I need you to stand up, please. Excuse me, sir. Could you please stand up? Okay, now, what I need you to do, I need you to face each other. And this is, this is our theme song. And we want everybody to know that it ain't no stopping us now. And we need you to come down through the Soul Train line. And we want you to come on down, come on down. This is Columbus, Georgia, and this how we do it. Come on down, come on down.
Ms. Walker, Ms. Walker.
We need you to come on down.
Ms. Walker. You're gonna need, you're gonna need to stick to something that counsel can help you with.
Excuse me?
But I'm sure they would've danced wonderfully.
Well, we need the Soul Train, don't we need to bring back Soul Train everybody? Okay, then.
You've got one more minute.
Well, again, that was my presentation. We want everybody to know, it ain't no stopping us now. When we come together and everybody see that we treat our neighbors the way we want to be treated ourselves, when we treat our family and we treat our troops' family, that this is the village, this is the village. We want everybody to do this, again, with the impacts. We want every week, people bring your cell phones, and this is where Columbus, Georgia, go viral, because we would like to see our community showcase their talents, showcase their ideas. We would like to see our young people put on skits that are going to, uh, impact our community about gun violence or about bullying, about different issues that are really a concern. And I think that these are positive ways. And of course, we would like to do a update. I know that I spoke with the.
Ms. Walker, you're out of, your, your time is up.
Yes, I'd just like to say this. I know I spoke with them.
Say it quickly.
Excuse me?
Please say it quickly. Your time is up. You can come back if you want to at the end of the meeting for another three minutes, but your time is up.
Okay, well, again, ain't no stopping us now.
There you go, I like it, thank you. All right, and I, and I did miss somebody. Apparently wasn't on my copy of the agenda, but Doris Meacham Rowe, uh, Ms. Rowe, she, oh, she canceled. That's why it's not on my agenda, okay. All right, well, that, um, that wraps up the public agenda, uh, and we'll move on now to the city manager's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few things. I've got the Columbus Lions lease agreement renewal.
There's a motion, second, to approve the lease agreement with Columbus Lions. Any discussion? You queue it, council can vote. Can you queue it? All right, councillors, you can. There, you can enter your votes, please. All right. Somebody's not working. Okay, and Counselor Crabbe voted yes. We really need to get that button fixed, 'cause it's, I know it's driving you nuts. All right, uh.
And, um, well, hopefully help is on the way with some ARP money. We're gonna do some things. But Met- uh, next, I've got Metro's twenty-twenty-three Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan that's required by federal, uh, government.
Motion and a second to approve the safety plan. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, please queue it. Councillors, you can register your vote. That's approved.
Got a lease agreement with Chattahoochee Valley Episcopal Church. It's, uh.
All right, there's a motion, second, to approve the lease agreement. Any discussion? Please queue it, and if you would, walk through what that was for, Ms. City Manager.
Well, it's a church that we own, and, uh, they will pay, uh, or be responsible for maintenance, um, of space and utilities. It's a hundred dollars, um, per year, uh, five hundred dollars for the initial lease, and five hundred dollars for each subsequent renewal. And, um, so they've asked to renew that, and you approved it.
Okay.
Got the porch project, uh, it's an application. If accepted, two million dollars.
All right, there's a motion, a second to the motion, Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, would you explain what the porch project is?
Yes, um, so, uh, we started to lease this property to Bellwood Area Neighborhood Development, uh, back in two thousand and six in support of the Bellwood Redevelopment Plan, and, um.
I think, I think this is the porch project, which is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, Narcan, I think.
Okay, she wants the porch, I'm sorry.
The porch project.
Yeah, I was going back to the lease agreement. So, uh, the porch project, and we've got someone here. It's a two million dollar Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration grant. Uh, and, uh, they, uh, provide funds for, um, first responders and those vulnerable in, uh, community to opioid overd- overdose. If you want, um, to, uh, explain it, you can.
Yeah, go ahead, Dana.
Good afternoon, counsel. I'm Dana Solomon. I'm the coordinator for the Adult Drug Court. The porch project was previously awarded to the City of Columbus, um, in two thousand and eighteen, I believe. Porch stands for Providing Overdose Reversal to Give Columbus Hope. Uh, Columbus has continued to see a rise in opioid, uh, use disorder and also in opioid-related overdose deaths and emergency department visits. Um, previously, the award for the, uh, Columbus Consolidated Government was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year over a four-year period totaling five hundred thousand dollars. Um, this grant would be for five hundred thousand dollars a year for four years totaling two million dollars. There's no match requirement by the city. The plans for the funds are to continue to equip all of our first responders, um, both law enforcement, fireman, and EMS in Columbus and its surrounding counties with access to Narcan. The reason we call it the porch project, um, I remember growing up, my favorite place to sit was always my grandparents' front porch, and that's where the community gathered, and that's where friends and family gather. And so one of the things we do with this project is we go to some of the harder-hit areas of our community and partner with agencies there, and we tell everyone to meet us on the porch so that friends and family of opioid, um, addicts in our community who fear that someone they love are at risk for an overdose, we actually give them Narcan there and training on how to use it so that in the event a mother comes home and finds a child or a loved one, um, overdosing in the house, they don't even have to wait for a fire or EMS to get there to administer life-saving Narcan to that individual. So we provide it to the community, it's provided to all first responders. This money actually is, uh, with a much larger funding source, we're gonna be able to do some really cool things like hiring some peer support specialists to hopefully be able to do warm handoffs, um, at emergency departments with our partners, New Horizons, which will also give these, um, addicts, um, access to medication-assisted treatment.
Great, thank you so much for that explanation.
And Ms. Solomon, I'll tell you, I'm glad you had an opportunity to go through that, 'cause it was groundbreaking when you got the first amount of money, and then to see it go up to this amount. And, and I know you're talking about the opioid overdose issues with the people at home, but, and it has saved a number of our first responders who have been coming to contact with, uh, with, with some of the drugs that actually can, can kill them. And, uh, they've used the Narcan, so thank you, thank you for what you.
So we are applying for and hope to receive. It's five hundred thousand dollars a year for four years.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Uh, next, I've got Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant.
No, we didn't, I'm sorry, we didn't vote on that in this comment. So, uh, there was a motion, second, and if you'll queue it. Council, please register your vote. That's passes.
So I've got, uh, it's, um, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars or as awarded, but Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, uh, asking your approval.
Second. Motion and a second to approve item five, discussion? Hearing any, if you would, queue it. Counsel, you can vote. It's approved.
And I've got, uh, another, um, grant opportunity, um, congressional directed spending requests for funding.
All right, motion and approval to, uh, motion and a second to approve number six. Any discussion? Hearing none, please register your votes, council.
If we are lucky, this would be four point eight million with a one point two million dollar, um, match, from, uh, through, um, Senator Warnock's office. You know, we recently got a four million dollar grant through that office, approved from Metro, and this is, again, from Metro. I've got, uh, some purchases.
All right.
Oh, we, uh, yeah, we, um, we pulled that one, actually. Yes.
All right, which one's that?
The one through Ossoff's office.
Okay, so item six?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, we did amend it on the, uh, agenda.
All right.
So it's not listed on your computers, but we, we pulled that one. So I've got purchases.
I think because it posted the wrong item, I don't know that it did, did it?
No, we posted the correct item. There was one grant we were seeking for twelve million from Ossoff, that got pulled, and this was for the four point eight million from Warnock's office.
So we approved the four point eight?
Yes, yes, that's right.
Okay, all right.
Well, I think, you, if you print it yours, your, then you don't have the update that's on the computer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I just grabbed it from the front.
I know, right? Yeah, sometimes we print them and then we, yeah. But anyway, uh, I've got some purchases, protective.
All right, there is a motion to approve all of the purchases, and of course, we'll go through each one, but are there any that somebody would like pulled for further discussion? All right, uh, then all in favor, can we queue it for all of them? I don't think you can. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
So, we've, we've got protective driver door shields for the various Metro buses, uh, and you know, they are grant-supported. It's two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and three dollars. I've got a contract extension for security surveillance, equipment, work in miscellaneouss, uh, with AdoptaSol. It's for a three-month extension, is what we're doing to get us through the, uh, RFP process. We've got shade coverings for South Common Softball Complex. And, um, we've got playground equipment for Parks and Rec, uh, at, uh, various, uh, locations. Uh, we've got shade structures for Britt David Park and Rigdon Park. We've got exercise equipment for various park locations. Got, uh, in-car mobile video recording system for the, uh, Columbus Police Department. Gator and, uh, gator for Cooper Creek Tennis Center. It's a piece of equipment that's needed to maintain the park. And, um, I've got, just for your information, some vehicles that were purchased for the sheriff's office. It's a total of seventeen vehicles, um, that have been purchased, uh, for the sheriff's office. And, uh, that concludes the purchases. Uh, I've got a few updates. Uh, the first one, Deputy City Manager Hodge on City Hall parking.
For that, we've got, uh, Counselor Davis.
City Manager, I just wanna touch a subject, and I kinda got two emotions here going, okay? So first, I just wanted to let you know that there's many citizens out there that I call our volunteer base that do just an exceptional job in working with our youth, and they do it in conjunction with our facilities, our parks, our, uh, uh, I guess, facilities that we have available for, for youth sports. I, I think I go back, back to October, November, December. I think I've touched on the subject several times, and first of all, let me say that I, I think, I know, these people are very, very grateful for all assistance and help that they get from the city, and the city does do a lot. So that being said, I wanna flip it to the other side. The other side is somewhat of an embarrassment, me personally. And I've been just calling around to some of these, uh, athletic programs for our youth that are out there that participate on our facilities. These are volunteer-based organizations. It's, uh, you know, some of these youth sports, it's very expensive for them to pay and to, to keep these things going. There's a, there's a lot of effort, there's a lot of time, there's a lot of, uh, deep down in the wallet from people to try to make it happen. They're doing it in conjunction with our facilities, our parks. I, I, I would like you to consider, I know I mentioned about getting ahead of, back in the fall, getting ahead of the spring seasons coming in. And there were several things that needed to be done that I saw, um, got a background in this, that, that would, could potentially, uh, these young athletes, these young children, could potentially put them in harm's way, just by the nature of the surfaces that they play on, okay? But they're out there, they're out there day in, day out. Parents recognize this, volunteers recognize this. I think that these people have gone deep in their pockets to fix our facilities, to fix our surfaces, our grass, things like that. I would like you to consider if, if these organizations can provide you with the right invoices and, and what they've spent out of their pocket, the little that they have, if we can grant and cover those costs, they basically have done the work for Parks and Recs for our city. They've done it themselves out of their own pockets. And, you know, it just, you know, I, I've just, like I said, I've got a couple emotions here on both sides. So I would like you to consider that. We didn't get to do it for whatever reason, but when I started seeing that, it was, I'm a city representative, it was not easy for me to see, and then, you know, I had to go around and thank all these people and, uh, and show our appreciation. And, but it was difficult. I just won't tell you, it was difficult. So I, I would like the executive administration to consider that, uh, maybe reimbursing some of these, uh, organizations that have gone into their reserves to, to fix our facilities. And I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about, you know, the whole park. I'm just talking about the things that normally we would do. And, uh, and granted, I will tell you that there are times that, uh, these volunteers will get out there, parents, and talk to, uh, our Parks and Rec staff who maintain and keep these facilities up, and they'll tell them that, you know, they'll take care of it or they'll handle it, and it, it does give them an opportunity to free them up and go somewhere else, but they, there is some kind of communication like that. But then there's other things that I think that. But then there's other things that I think that uh, we as a city do have somewhat responsibility. So if we could help in that area, it just would, I think it would speak volumes about our support and where we're at with providing what these volunteer groups need, so we could keep this going, we can keep it going. So I I I just wanted to.
And and I I will give that thought and and then I will challenge um my team to come up with a, a process or a program that um, we would receive certain work order requests from the various leagues. Um, and and then maybe in the budget, we can set us out a pool of money for those requests that may come from those various leagues. And and I, and I say a process and a a program, a pool of money, because, I mean, quite frankly, I mean, some leagues have um families, representation that can do more than others. And so they can't do it upfront and then ask for reimbursement. And I'd rather have a program with money set aside that they make the request, and then we can fund or those requests that they don't, you know, I mean, I think about Columbus, Georgia, our reserve fund is so that if we get awarded four point eight million dollars in a grant, and they say it's a reimbursable grant, well, if we don't have four point eight million dollars, we can't spend the money because, and get reimbursed. And so you may have some in a similar situation at the various ball fields, they don't have the upfront money to get reimbursed. And some have the upfront money and can get reimbursed, and so you're going to have some who can win, some winners and losers, and I'd rather create a program that would, I mean, we set us out the money, and if they need this money to do a, I don't, small project grant, whatever, you know, we we go and do that. But we'll figure something out, but I hear you, I hear your concern.
All right, Councilor Tucker?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, um, Councilor Davis, and thank you, City Manager. I actually, and I want to thank um Holly and um Mr. Selden at Shirley B., but we have had, especially with baseball, um, with with all the sports, but just recently with baseball finding some of the issues at Shirley B. And as you mentioned, people using their own funds and might not have the funds to do it, but we have people doing patchwork um in our bathrooms, um.
Now, that's unacceptable.
Right, but I'm I'm, I just wanted to to, I just wanted to tell you.
Yeah.
What's going on, because that way it can put, put it on your your radar.
Yes.
But our our bathrooms are in in bad shape, in poor shape at um Shirley B. Winston Park. Um, and I, my counterpart over there is clapping, but she knows because she walks every day at Shirley B. And I get, that is like one of the number one calls I get. And when the kids can't properly use the bathroom, and I have somebody that have some plumbing skills, they go in and fix it, that way the the toilets can flush, that they're not like actually um running, you know, constantly and and water is flooding.
Yeah.
And I, we we have some some serious issues.
Well, and I'd love for those to get to me, I'll tell you this, I'm going out there Friday, Friday.
I don't know what time, but I'm sure.
No, no, I'm going Friday, and when I go, if I see what you just described to me, somebody got a problem.
Yeah. So we.
So I'm going out there Friday.
We we have, we have some issues um at Shirley B. And I can, I can tell you, I can reach out to um the the league uh in reference to the bathrooms and some of the other things that have occurred.
Sure.
And the lights have been out like almost, you know, every night. Um, I'm having to, and I know that's a Georgia power issue, but we are having some major problems at Shirley.
Sure, I'll check it out, but thank you for sharing that.
Councilor Cogle?
Um, I'll just, I I'm also going to echo uh what Councilor Davis and Councilor Tucker have said. Um, you know, we have families out at uh, for District Eight Little League out at Ri- at Rigdon Park that um are lining their own fields, cutting their own fields, uh, patching up their own paint, fixing the fences. They're doing that out of pocket and um, and I realize that, you know, uh, Parks and Rec has some budgetary and and um, and personnel issues, but I think all of our departments have that. And so I would, uh, I'm going to challenge um your office to uh be creative in coming up with a creative solution for that, because our um, our citizens and our, and especially those families who are already struggling to put uh their kids in Little League, um, to get them off the streets and give them something to do, shouldn't have to be lining their own fields and cutting their grass and dragging the field, using their own gas, using their own vehicles to drag the field, uh, investing in the um, the equipment to drag the fields um before each game. And uh, uh, to Councilor Tucker's uh point, the bathrooms out there are deplorable, uh, they can't use them. Uh, the plumbing rarely works, the the football portion is in disarray. Uh, you know, and I, and I understand that Rigdon Park is getting a little bit of a a facelift with uh the pool, but the basketball court is um, the surface is almost unplayable. Um, it's just, it's not, it's not the situation that we want for our community to get our kids off the street, to give them something to do. Um, and and I will forever say that Parks and Recreation is one of our foundations of a health, a healthy committee, a healthy community. And um, if we're not, if we're not willing to champion for that, then um, we've got some issues.
Well, thank you for sharing that, and uh, we'll we'll take a look at Rigdon as well.
Mayor Protem?
Well, I wanted to say that um, I've, I have heard and I've seen the work that uh Parks and Rec and Public Works did to help the leagues prepare for their opening ceremonies the last couple of weekends, and they did an awesome job. So the families were excited, uh, it was a little chilly out there, but but the families were excited to get the season started and 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 there were a lot of compliments. There are a couple of lights out here and there that I know they'll get to uh in time, but uh, but I just wanted to offer congratulations for for them and acknowledge their efforts to help, help get that going.
Well, and and thank you, Mayor Protem, and and thank each of you for sharing. You know, we're not going to have citizens repair ba- uh restrooms. And restrooms need to be decent for youth activities, and even when there's no youth activity going on, you need to be able to go to the restroom. And so that's something we will give close attention to.
Uh, Councilor Garrett?
Uh, I want to echo what the other councils have said, we've had similar issues at Lake Bottom. Uh, the bathroom, I mean, when I, if if you go early enough, if I do early morning walk or run, uh, it's not any fault of Parks and Rec, it's uh, there's people sleeping in there. Uh, and that's, that is an issue we've got to learn to address. But uh, I will say, I've, I have brought, it's been brought to y'all's attention about the falling, where the batting cage was falling apart. And uh, the Carver Contracting Company did that out of their own pocket because it was a dangerous hazard. Uh, the batting cages were in a point where they could have collapsed on children. And it was not a direct, as far as I know, and I may, maybe I went on the email chain, he has not been reimbursed. Uh, but I agree with Steve Andrew, we need to have a fund set in place so that, you know, we have that ready. But that was a, I mean, as an attorney, that was a hazard that we were made aware of, and uh, it it wasn't taken care of after a series of months. Uh, so I mean, I've definitely got, heard concerns from the coaches and parents at the Little League, at Peach. Uh, they have concerns about, you know, maintained, maintaining the park in general too, but.
So, yeah, I've heard the concerns and we'll, we'll address those.
Well, and it's, and it is a, it is a partnership with the Little Leagues, but we've got to make sure we're doing our part, and we got to make sure, particularly with the restrooms and the facilities that they're, they don't really have any control over. And I know when my kid was playing in high school uh on the girl's softball field, we had to make sure we got there early as parents to get the guy that was sleeping in the dugout out of there and clean up after him, so it was, it can get bad.
Thank you. Uh, with that, Mayor, Deputy City Manager Hodge is going to talk about the parking garage at City Hall, at the new City Hall, uh, Sinovus property, yes.
So good morning, still morning, got a few more minutes to morning. Uh, so good morning, Mayor and Council. This is just a brief update on the parking garage at City Hall and the options uh that we have for consideration today. Um, if you can pull up the presentation, please. So we are moving forward with City Hall, we hope to have um the first move scheduled uh the first week of June. And so as we're moving forward with that, we really need to determine how we're going to utilize the parking garage uh for City Hall, and so we have a few options to go through uh with you today. So again, this is a facility at six hundred and thirty-four spaces. There are fifty-three spaces on Level One that I'll kind of talk to in reference to some of the options. Level One is really, at this point, open uh to the air, um, and so it's not fenced in at this point. Uh, as you move up into the parking levels, there are about a hundred and sixteen spaces per level. Sinovus is currently, through our agreement with them, have access to two hundred and thirty-four spaces through July thirty-one of twenty twenty-four, so they're still occupying the bank building and still utilizing the garage per our agreement. Uh, we will need about two hundred spaces for employees and fleet vehicles starting in June of this year. And then, once everyone moves into that facility, that's another hundred and fifty spaces. We will also be utilizing this parking facility when we start the construction of the Judicial Center for a place for employees to park uh while the Judicial Center is being built. Uh, we will be utilizing that parking facility uh as as opposed to the Government Center parking facility that at some point they will have to move out of that facility. So we will need that uh parking garage at City Hall for overflow. So option one, uh, option one, which is the option that is recommended by the sheriff, uh, this is for employee parking only. Uh, this garage would just be dedicated to employees, so no public parking in that facility. Um, it would be secured, it would be fenced in, uh, there would be an access gate for employees to enter and exit uh the facility. Of course, the pro for that is it's the most secure, provides ample overflow parking for uh the Government Center employees during the Judicial Center construction. Obviously, the con is there's no um public parking in the garage, but there is um a lot of public parking on First Avenue. Um, we have about seventy-five um construction uh employees who are working in the City Hall now that are using First Avenue, so we know there's some spaces that would be available for public parking on First Avenue as well as Broadway uh in front of the new City Hall. Option two would be that the first level would be available for public parking during business hours only. Uh, this would provide fifty-three spaces for those um citizens who are visiting City Hall, have business with City Hall, um, and that would be fifty-three spaces that would be available as well as on-street parking. Uh, the garage would be secured with fencing um and access gates and would be locked down um after hours, after business hours. Uh, upper levels of the garage would again be secured uh for employee parking. Uh, we do have a lot of city vehicles that would be on those upper levels, so we do want to make sure that we have those secured. Uh, the pros, obviously, is to provide some parking for the Judicial Center, uh, construction overflow, uh, provide dedicated spaces for in the public while they're conducting business. This is a very costly option, it does exceed the budget that we've allocated for parking because we would have to set up two um secure checkpoints, one as you enter the garage and then one for the upper levels. The third option is to provide the first level public parking at all times. So we would not provide any secure access as you enter the garage. The secure access would be going the second levels and up, and so that's where the gates would be, that would be closed uh after business hours, but the first level would be open for public parking. Uh, we would probably recommend a two-hour parking so that it's utilized for um citizens that come to visit City Hall during business hours and then also for after-hours, um, and it is just for the first level, is our recommendation. Does again provide for that overflow parking, uh, provides dedicated spaces uh for the public. And also, there would be um places for city employees to park, and it would provide fifty-three spaces for after-hours and on the weekends uh for the public. This is the the least costly option and something that we could do within our budget. Uh, so those are the three options that we're presenting to council today for consideration. We are ready to move forward with um getting the garage ready for occupancy uh for the first week of June, so we would need direction from City Council on uh which option or if there's others that you would like us to investigate, we're happy to do so.
Well, and and Ms. Mayor, if I may say, and and this is just trying to summarize because we we need to obviously come to some conclusion. We know the sheriff prefers option one, which would be no public parking in that six hundred and thirty-four space garage for security reasons and other reasons. Uh, but the question is, you know, we've got options two and three, and I guess the first question is, do you want the public to be able to park in the, in the garage? And then if the answer is yes, then we need to eliminate option one and we need to concentrate on two and three. And two would be, you know, it's during business hours, no after-hours, no weekends in the garage. And three, I believe, would be take the gates off and people can park and they just can't get to the employee level, but they can. So the the first question is, do you want public to have parking in the six hundred and thirty-four space garage considering option one is no public for security reasons? And then we we can go with two or three and work that out.
Mayor Protem?
Pardon? Sure, sure.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mayor City Hall, so my recommendation is option one. Um, if you go to any metropolitan area, the public cannot park in a government facility. You go to DeKalb County, Fulton County, even Muskogee County, the public cannot park under a garage for safety reasons. We know that there are incidents that have happened in other cities to where people have planted trucks, parked trucks under buildings or next to a building as sheriff. It's my responsibility, and I can't sign off on anything but option one for safety reasons. It may be six hundred and thirty-four parking spaces, other cities may have the same. But for the sake of those that utilize that government facility, they make recommendations or or most cities will have an additional parking garage or a parking space to where the public can utilize that. Um, I'm not saying that it's a bad option for option two or option three, but as sheriff, and this being my responsibility for safety for government facilities and government buildings, I can't say in good faith that I can sign off on this because of what could possibly happen, because you have, even in the Government Center, you have employees that may want to work um weekends or come there on weekend. At the federal building that my wife works at, they have bees around the parking garage because of homeless people that will come up under the garage and cause issues for employees that work at that federal building. For safety reasons, I've put and I selected option one. Because if you go with any other option, here's what's going to have, have to happen, that we will have to come in and take other safety measures the way that we do every single morning in the Government Center before the employees get there. We have bomb dogs that go through the building, that people may say, well, um, we don't have bombs in Muskogee County. Well, we seized enough C four last year to bring down almost a city block. So we're next to Fort Bennett, and I don't want to get into too many other safety. And I don't want to get into too many other safety reasons, but as Sheriff, this is why we chose Option One. It's up to the Council to decide what you may want to go with. But as Sheriff, I chose Option One.
Mayor Protim?
How are you?
How are you?
That's fine. Yep.
Am I good?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
No, the reason I asked for you to come forward to bring that up because somewhere in my first two or three years, we were briefed one time that a guy tried to drive a pickup truck up the steps of the government building when we had council meetings down there. And we had no idea. And his tires went flat trying to get in. And I've heard of all the different security issues, but Fort Bennett being the main key. And I know you can't talk on that, but it's something I've kept up with since I was a kid. And we are number one on a lot of lists around the country and sometimes around the world because of Fort Bennett, which will become Fort Moore. So, I just wanted to hear it from you because I'm one that came in, and I tell the story all the time. I came in this building when there was sawdust on the floor. We only had steps on the City Manager's side. Councilor Thomas was discussing the fact that it's not reasonable to walk around that side. So, we added steps to this side. While they were having that discussion, I had them to walk me through this facility and show me how to get out of here before we ever came in here. So, I've always been concerned about security because there are people who don't like us, for the sake of a better term, they just don't like us. And we need to stay as safe as possible because it's hard enough just to get through. And the Sheriff keeps us informed on how to move about. And I saw some security reasons. One of our judges went into Barnes and Nobles one night, and I just sat in my car to watch him move around. And he parked his car like back by the back window. And he came out and he looked around. So, I asked, at that time, somebody in security at the Sheriff's Department, "Is that the proper protocol?" He said, "It is." So, he can see what's around his car and if anything's there, don't go to the car. So, I appreciate you and I hope we consider staying as safe as possible.
Yeah, and if I can also add to that, that I've put in place a safety measure for even the Government Center that we no longer allow courier services to park under the North Brewhay. They have to park out either on First Avenue's side or either on the Second Avenue's side because that's part of the safety measures that we put in place.
Yeah, I had a chance to see, I forgot what the city was, where they put the bomb in and blew everything up.
Oklahoma.
Oklahoma City. And they had the little chairs of the kids that died and other people. And it kind of stuck with me. So, hopefully, it will do us right for all of us. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a question for Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. If I heard you right, it was a hundred and sixteen parking spaces per level. Is that right?
Yes, sir. The first level is about fifty-three and then it's about a hundred and sixteen on the upper levels.
On the other ones, okay. And how many employees will be utilizing the parking deck?
So, until July thirty-one of twenty-four, we'll have two hundred and thirty spaces for Sonovus. And about two hundred spaces will be needed with the initial wave the first week of June, and that is employees and city vehicles. Because, obviously, they'll have their personal vehicle and then we'll have a city vehicle there. So, we need about two hundred spaces for that.
Okay. So, and they'll be parking on the third floor and up? Is that what you said?
I believe Sonovus is three and four.
Well, I'm just talking about the city. What do the city utilizes in the parking garage?
They will utilize probably the second floor. And then, Sonovus has the third and the fourth floor. And then, we would have five. And then, six is an uncovered floor.
Okay, but once Sonovus has moved?
Then, we would utilize two through six, basically.
Okay, two through six, but that's several hundred parking spaces. And you said there will only be?
So, we'll utilize probably two, three, and four. And then, we can utilize Levels Five and Six after Sonovus moves out for the overflow parking as the Judicial Center is being built. And then, after the Judicial Center is built, we probably will only need two, three, and four on a regular basis.
Okay, so you're asking us today to make a decision on future use of the parking garage after Sonovus moves out?
We're asking today because we need to put those security measures in place before we move in in June. So, do we need to put the fence around the ground floor? And that's where our security access would be? Or do we put it as you go up into the parking level on the second, basically, on the second level for that to be the secure entrance for employees? And so, there would be a gate location at that location.
So, we wanted you to answer the questions today. And then, of course, you can, through consensus, give us direction or we will bring back something at the next meeting asking you to approve a particular option based on your conversation today.
Well, I understand the concerns about safety, but at the same time, this is a city facility. I mean, the citizens should have a right to park at least on the first two levels, in my opinion. And then, we can secure Third and up. And that's my opinion. I understand what the Sheriff says and I can appreciate that. But I just don't see how you can tell the citizenry that they can't park there. So, it's, it just, I would prefer an option where we have security, I guess, from the third floor up and allow those with access, certain access, to be able to utilize the parking garage.
And that's why, Mayor Protim, I said, if we, I mean, you've got three options. The sec, two and three allows for public parking. It's just whether it cuts off at Five or Six and you don't have access evenings and weekends or whether we just, you know.
Yeah.
So, but if you eliminate Option One, then we know what we're working with. If Option One is not viable for you all, then we know we're going to have public parking. We can then fine-tune it.
So, if today we eliminate Option One, then you would go back to the drawing board and try to work something out?
We'll fine-tune the public parking component. We know they're going to be in the garage. It's just a matter of how we secure it and just, you know. There are certain garages, I know you can't park in that garage after a certain hour. You know? And so, I don't like allowing twenty-four-seven for public parking in the space. So, if you eliminate Option One, you know, I mean, I'll have further conversation with staff because on the weekend, Uptown might need space. But we're not going to let you park there all night.
Right.
You know, because then we become a storage facility. And, you know, so it would have to stop at eleven or ten, eleven or midnight. Let's say on weekends, but weekdays, it may be, we would be able to post, say, if this garage closes at ten on weekdays, midnight on weekends, and we're going to boot you or we're going to ticket you if it's there after the hour. And that's what we'll do. But if you eliminate One, then we know to work on public parking.
Okay. Well, I would prefer, I would like to see us work on it a little more. This facility, this structure does not have a basement parking, is that right?
No, that's correct. It's entry.
Ground level up.
Ground level up, yes, sir.
Okay. I would like for us to set a time limit, have them, that you can have parking after whatever, eleven, whatever that time period is going to be.
So, is there consensus to eliminate Option One and then we just work on with public parking?
I think so. I'm hearing there is consensus to eliminate Option One. Is that? Yeah. I, well, I, I.
Well, I think, I think you.
I yield, Mayor.
Okay. We've got a couple more people. Councilor Thomas?
It was, it was my understanding when we decided to move into this facility as the City Hall that we were going to make available to the public businesses that the public has to go into and do their business. If you want a business license or whatever else, you can go in there. I think that we are defeating our purpose if we do not allow them to park in the garage and not have to park on First Avenue. I'm also wanting us to think about, if you will, the evening and weekend parking. That garage is accessible or close to the Springer, the River Center, to businesses and restaurants around that area that people could park in off the street if they chose to do that. I know that at this point, there's only one entrance from the garage into the building, and that's on the second floor. Is that correct?
It's on the
Second and Third.
Third floor of the parking garage. You enter on the second floor of the building.
Okay. And it, and?
And the ground floor entrance, obviously.
You can enter from the ground floor of the garage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You know, we could have part of the change order of the building to cut some more doors if we needed to do that. But I do believe that we need to make sure that our citizens have access to that building when they are doing business with the city. And then, if on the weekend or evening, if we can work it out, if we can do something that, you know, makes sense to give them, the downtown businesses, some access to that, too. When the Sheriff was talking, I thought about, right after nine eleven, I lived in Orange County, California, and I did a lot of flying. And one of the things that they, I flew out of the John Wayne Airport in Orange County. And one of the things they did was they closed off all of the parking right next up to the building, right next up to the actual airport building. And I thought, if I'm going to blow up that building, I don't care if you've got a sign up there that says, "I can't park here." I'm going to blow up the building. I'm not a, I'm not a public safety expert. Sheriff, the only experience I have with public safety are the five speeding tickets I've gotten in my lifetime of driving. But this is one of the, one of the things that I think that we can deal with, all of these issues, and still give to our citizens the opportunity to park, to have a place to park, to have a off-the-street parking, to do their business with the city. And then, if possible, to do their business on the weekend with other businesses in and around the parking garage. The issue about where they should park while we're doing the renovation, I mean, we're doing the construction of the Judicial Center, I would much rather them park in the River Center, in the River.
Center, parking garage.
Yeah, the Broadway parking garage across from the River Center, if that is needed. We can do that, we can handle that, we can do, you know, all of those kinds of things. But I really want this one available to the public and to our citizens who have business with us.
Thank you. Councilor Kogle?
I was going to say, Ed Wolverton is here. I'd love to see if he has a comment at the appropriate time.
Mr. McKenzie, who is a business down there. So, I think we'll let both of them speak. I just wanted to get the counselors first.
Yeah, so, the part, Uptown is booming right now with the addition of the hotels and all the new businesses. And so, I don't think that we should even, I think Option One is not really an option of, I completely understand safety from the Sheriff's standpoint. But on the second floor, I believe, we already have parking spots that are allocated for the Eleventh, I think it's the Eleventh Street lofts or some of those lofts. Those are the entrance there. And then, for some of the other, for some of the other residents that are already staying downtown. So, that, you know, cutting off that second floor is going to complicate that already. But aside from that, the merchants and the business owners that are downtown are already struggling with parking as it is. And so, when you are, when you are circling the Broadway five times, I've done it before, looking for a parking spot, and you get frustrated and you leave, that's going to be, that's already a lot of lost business for some of those businesses down there. And I think, I'm going to ask Jason McKenzie, actually, to come up. He owns Ride on Bike. So, and I know that he has struggled with this for over twenty years, since they just had their twenty-year anniversary. So, and it's become, especially in the last ten years, has become an extraordinarily difficult and challenging problem, especially now that we've got pickup spots for pickups from restaurants and we have loading zones and we have construction. The construction that's already going on at that location is already putting a load that is kind of cracking the parking problem as it is adding an extra two hundred, or adding all of those construction workers in on a daily basis is already clogging up that parking issue on First Street. So, Jason, if you want to come up and say?
We've got a couple more counselors.
Okay, just kidding.
We'll bring them, no, we'll bring them up. We fully intend to. But, and you did bring up something that I think we need to probably do away with. We allowed reserved parking spots for pickup during the pandemic when nobody, you know, could eat in.
I think we addressed that, like, in December, that that was going to disappear, but.
It hasn't yet, I don't think. We need to enforce that. Councilor Garrett?
I mean, one of my concerns was that one of my doctors has a loft directly connected to the parking lot where the walk-through is. So, enforcing the time limit would be unreasonable. And also, my other concern is, if we have people parking downtown, at least on the weekends, maybe not on the weeknights, I don't think we should boot them until at least twenty-four hours has passed because what about, what are we doing but pushing drunk drivers on the road? If they decide, "Hey, I shouldn't, I've had more than I should have had to drink, but your car is going to be towed." So, they have to either make a decision on that or they're going to drive drunk. I mean, I think, I think at least on the, on the time limit. But I think at least on the time limit issue, I mean, the people who are residents, at least, need to have some sort of pass to be able to get into the buildings.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. I was just thinking maybe of a hybrid idea that could still create some security and still offer spaces that, you know, we do a pass system kind of like what Counselor Garrett mentioned for the residents of those lofts. And also, maybe the businesses downtown because then at least it would clear up space where the business owners and the people that are working there, they can be guaranteed a place to park, which would in turn free up a lot of the parking in front of businesses. I know that has been an issue when my husband had a business down there. And so, maybe we could work something like that and where these business owners can give passes to their employees. And then, we actually know who is parking in that structure. It's not just a free-for-all. Just an idea I wanted to throw out there.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, I totally grasp the concerns that the Sheriff has shared with us. And they are, they're very valid and certainly I respect his knowledge and understanding of the matter. I also am thinking about the definite need for more parking in that area just by the location of the facility, parking garage. I know when we talked, our citizens were really gracious to allow us the financial resources to be able to even do something like this. And certainly, we're, this center is going to be part of the community. You do have a, I'll remind you, you do have on the opposite side of a block away, you have another parking deck that's down there that can be utilized on the other side of the Hampton, which is not that far away. But then, you know, when you look at all corners of the building, you kind of somewhat share the same securities, concerns that might be there in some of the conversation that we're talking about. I saw three options, two and three. If I read them wrong, I think they only allow for parking on the first, on the first floor. I think they're I think there needs to be an option four, which I would agree that we need to explore the second level and provide parking as well. I would rather take the resources, even if you have to pay a little bit more, to provide the security. And I'm not gonna sit here and tell you how to come up with that, but I think there, you know, you put a meeting of the minds together and figure out a little more, you know, opportunity on the security side. And it may cost a little bit more, but I view that as, those amount of spaces, what you would have to go out and construct and find them and do everything. I think it's a small amount of investment for the necessary parking places in in that area. And whether it's the first floor, second floor, third floor, you know, if somebody really wanted to make a statement, you know, they could do it. They could do it in many ways. And, you know, I think, I think you're you're gonna be okay with that. But certainly, if we need more personnel, more equipment, more security measures or whatever, I'd all be, I'd be for that to, as a way to deal with an extra one hundred and sixteen spaces that I think are desperately needed. There's no other, I mean, there's just no other, from a central in that area, the parking spaces that's needed. And if anybody's been down there in the evenings, it's it's getting more and more challenging to find a, find a place to park.
And so, Mayor, if I could just interject quickly, you've helped us a lot by eliminating option one. And what we would be bringing you back for consideration in a vote would be two, three, or four options related to mixed use of city employees, public access for business, private. After, we'd bring you back all of the options. We just needed to know if if it was one, then we were done.
Well, I think it's pretty clear you can kick option one to the side.
And so, and with that, so we'll bring back all the options related to mixed use.
Thanks, Mayor. And look, I'm not making light of this, okay? But if it was a judicial center or courtrooms and judges and all the rest of it, I wouldn't, you know, I'd be having a total different outlook at this. But I I'm looking at it from a different perspective, but still thinking about people's safety at the same time.
Sure, I understand. Yep. So, I mean, we, I know what we need to bring.
I know. We've still got two more counselors. Mr. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Once we set this up, I'm assuming there will be ID cards for those coming in, and they'll swipe to have the gate open?
Yes, sir.
Go on the main level.
If, well, it depends on which option. If it's public parking on the main level or the main level on the second floor, then the gate access would be going up into the third floor, and it would be card access.
So from the third floor, that would be card access?
Yes.
Okay. We have, I think Counselor Walker alluded to it, we have some renters that have been there for a while, and and I believe they do park on three. So I was told it was three, but
I think it's three. Okay, they're on three.
The, what we're looking at is having a swipe card for them to go to work and home, that kind of thing, on the third floor, so they would be able to swipe access. Would that require a background check?
Well, Mayor Protem, so we would bring back option, because now we're talking about mixing them with the employees, and we don't know who they, well.
Well, that's why I was asking about the background check.
Yeah.
If you if you identify them, then you, when they swipe, you know who's coming in and out.
Yeah.
So
We'll have to have that discussion with the sheriff's office.
So why would, even if they're on the third, and we placed them on two, we're accommodating them. But again, that would be an option.
Well, I think on the third floor is where they have access to walk across to where they're, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, maybe so.
They have direct access.
That's where they're, they're, they enter their home that way. So two would, you know.
We could come up with
If you go to the grocery store and you come back, you know.
We could, we could come up with an option that includes that.
Okay, that's what I was, what I was trying to get at. And is it possible that some of our folks could use the River Center parking during the interim? I'm not, I'm talking about maybe the workers, and then have some kind of transport for them? If, I mean, there may be another garage closer, but I'm just wondering if there's something we could work out in the interim if needed. Just wanted to plant that seed. You can talk about it later. So, anyway, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, this is, the sheriff kind of put me back in a forced protection mindset. I know we're shifting a lot to the new parking garage. Can we address this parking garage here since we will have a more permanent dedicated offices for the counselors? Can we, yeah, here, since we are adding that, can we actually add this to the plan and find a, because now, honestly, my my nerves are a little bad because of what the sheriff talked about. And I've done forced protection where you actually have to go and check for bumps and all that. I think that we need to be concerned about where the counselors park and having something within a plan to ensure that the the safety of the counselors are addressed.
And the city manager.
Are you gonna be over here?
I'm just kidding.
But I know we're gonna be over here.
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
And I know we've got another couple of weeks before we have to make this decision. But Mr. McKenzie, you wanna have a few quick words? And Mr. Wolverton, if you have something you wanna add, or? But I think it's important to have a discussion prior to bringing back the options so that you can have some input.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak. Jason McKenzie with Ride On Bikes. We just celebrated twenty years on Saturday. And my family is Buddy Gomes and Tom Jones with Uptown Life Group. So it's loft, mobile assault cellar, and soon to be a new restaurant here in the next two months. We've worked very, very hard to create this parking problem. You know, it's taken a long time to create this problem, because it wasn't there twenty years ago, much less thirty. And I also very much respect Sheriff Countryman, always have respected his leadership, and have been very clear to him in person about that. Saying that, keeping our government officials safe is extremely important, but also our citizens' safe is extremely important. So that parking garage being right across the street from our one hundred and sixty employees that we have now, will soon to be just over two hundred, having that safety option to walk across the street is crucial for us. And it is not at ten o'clock PM. It is not at midnight a lot of times. As you know, we've all had the opportunity to enjoy those restaurants. It can be at two or three o'clock in the morning by the time we get closed up and get out of there. So it's super important for us to have that. And I know you've already addressed this, but the, having the options that were up there earlier, only allowing the fifty-three parking places on the base floor is not a good option as well. So definitely adding floors one and two will be crucial for us and for the improvement of our business moving forward. We love Uptown Columbus, and it's super important. We love Columbus in general. And having the ability for our team members to have safe walk across the street as opposed to trying to find parking, and allowing the citizens to have more ability to have parking to enjoy Uptown is a big deal. And adding those two, I guess it's one hundred and seventy-eight, I believe it was, one hundred and seventy-seven parking places can make a really big difference in those two parking decks. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Happy anniversary. Counsel, Mr. Wolverton, you, did you need to say something, Mr.?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Thomas?
Jason, I will tell you that I remember when that garage was built and Curvin's Department Store was in that location. So you know how long ago that was. Not that I'm old or anything, but that that was what it, but Ms. Deputy City Manager, I would recommend that perhaps you get with Jason and maybe Buddy Gomes and some of the other people downtown and talk to them about, as as you're trying to come up with these options, to talk with them about how can we make sure that those folks that work in your restaurants have a safe place to park after night? And, you know, they may be willing to make some kind of financial contribution to make sure that they have those parking places and that sort of thing. But I would highly recommend that we talk with those folks downtown, those business owners downtown, to make sure that we're, we're not causing additional problems for them, that we are not cognizant of. Thank you.
And we have met with Buddy Gomes, and we owe him a follow-up meeting, so we will do that.
Mr. Wolverton, do you have a few comments?
Yes, just very short. So to concur with the city manager, this is really a mixed-use issue for all of the uptown district. Any parking system has to be able to to touch all the different market segments that are part of the uptown. The office workers, as the city manager, and your your city staff, and of course, our our city council members as well. It has to be available. Most of your stuff happens in the daytime. We have a vibrant nighttime economy with the restaurants and the theater portion, so having that nighttime use. And then, as we continue to add residences in uptown, they have a need for more twenty-four-hour kind of access. So striking a balance is really important. And this is a public asset now that we really need to maximize the use of it. Having the garage sit there unused for ten hours a day really is not maximizing and using its potential as much as we could. So we look forward to working with city staff and coming back with you on a, on what the final recommendation would be.
Yeah. Okay. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just want to add to the mix again. The city manager, Mr. Mayor, the, you know, at one time, we had the opportunity, just couldn't get everybody to the table to possibly get another multi-use parking deck down there. It just didn't happen. But I I can see in the future that we may touch that again at some point in time where there'll be a parking deck in a strategic area. And at that point, maybe this all just becomes a temporary type situation that we can go back to a more, I guess, secured plan as you're presenting to us. But until that takes place, I think those spaces are desperately needed.
Yeah. Well, Riverfront Place, I think, has about a thousand parking spaces, and they're not gonna use all those with the multifamily. So when that's complete, there may be some way to integrate that into the plan as well. Counselor Huff?
Question. Are they still going to use the golf carts to run from the River Center parking garage to take people through?
The city metro staff is working on that.
Oh, yeah. That's our program.
Okay, okay. I heard someone
The answer is yes, we have to work on the times.
So we'll be doing it? Okay.
Yeah. Well, Mayor, I think we
Thank you, Mr. Wolver.
Having eliminated option one, we know to bring back, you know, two, three, or four options with public use of the parking garage. So we appreciate that discussion. Next, we've got comprehensive camera update. Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin.
Okay, good morning, Mayor, or good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Just to give you a brief, very brief update on where we are with our comprehensive camera program, we are about ninety percent complete with phase one. That means five hundred and eighty-nine cameras we have installed throughout the parks and rec facilities. We still have a couple of more that we are working on. And we have, of course, the cameras that we have provided to the police department for the high-crime areas. And then, of course, we are looking at now the installation of our poles and for the high illegal dumping areas with Public Works. They've identified a number of different areas where we're gonna place those poles. And of course, those are mobile, so we'll be moving them throughout as we continue down the list of those high illegal dumping areas. Phase two, phase three, as you have been provided some time back, these are the areas that we're gonna be placing the cameras in those departments for phase two. It would be the sheriff's office and their components, the public safety building in the various precincts, fire EMS, and the health department. Phase three will include Metro, the Civic Center, Public Works, and the Trade Center. We are going to be working on phases two right now, phase two and three concurrently as we go ahead and get some of the groundwork complete, which includes, I'm sorry, let's go here, which includes pulling the wires in the fiber, et cetera. And so, once we pull that together that way, all we have to do next is go to and start installing the camera systems in for phase two. And then we're gonna continue to provide updates to you along the way. But let's go back to the potential phase four. What we are going to do, based on conversations that this council has had and what the mayor has asked us to do as well, to look at the cost for installing additional cameras throughout city parks. Right now, our city facilities, right, phase one in particular, parks and recreation, we're only placing cameras in the building and throughout the exterior of the buildings. Carver Park is the only one thus far that we have placed cameras throughout the park because of the issues that we've had within the park. And so we're gonna be looking at different parks right now and facilities where we'll be able to do the same, what it's gonna cost to place cameras throughout other parks and not just the building itself. So we'll bring back a cost on what that will be and then determine if this is something that you all want to proceed with, what that funding source would be. So that's where we are with that. And, so that's kind of where we are with the comprehensive camera program. Any questions on phases one, two, or three?
Doesn't appear to be. Good job.
Mr. Mayor, and I just want to say, it's really a public service announcement to whoever is dumping the tires all over South Columbus. On Andrews Road, at Casita Road, behind the gas station, I've asked staff to go cite them, mounds of tires. And then on my way in this morning on Andrews Road at the railroad track at those empty apartments, mounds of tires. I sent staff out on Andrews Road across, right behind the Family Dollar, two weeks ago, to remove mounds of tires. And so, this public service announcement is to the tire company or whoever's doing it, we just introduced this camera program to you. And I've told them, I've told staff, the ones who issue citations for dumping and littering, I want to see some thousand-dollar fans. I've asked them to go and issue tickets, and we want one thousand-dollar fans, a maximum. But I'm tired. I don't know, it has to be a tire company.
Oh, yeah.
And this announcement is to let them know, we're looking for you, and we plan to get you. I know you all see all the tires. I mean, it is crazy. I don't know, they're selling tires or buying tires to dispose of them, but we are coming to get you, tire company or whoever you are, and we want the maximum fans.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, can you please add the old Walmart building on Buena Vista Road? If you ride behind that building, and I I agree with you, city manager, it must be some type of tire company, but it's about three hundred tires behind that that building. And soon as you turn, I mean, they're, they are piled up just from the corner all the way around the building, just on the Walmart side. And I know that's my my seatmate district, but we we have, I think the mayor and I was out at an event years ago, and we had to do a cleanup in that area, because we were standing there looking at, you know, all the high dumping in that area. But now they have, instead of doing, because now we got truck parking that we need to address in the near future. We have eighteen-wheelers parking at that Walmart and then also across the street and all up Buena Vista Road. But, yeah, all up Buena Vista Road, but we really need to do, put in a three-one-one to go behind Walmart on Buena Vista Road. It is becoming a nuisance.
But something's going on with tires.
Yeah, I don't know what it what it is. And sadly, I feel like it's coming from other areas, not just Columbus. Because it's, I just don't see how we're getting bombarded with all these tires, so.
Well, we're hoping that these cameras are able to pick up some of this so that we can make examples of folk who are doing this, be it in the city or outside, coming into the city. We're gonna make some examples, as the city manager has said.
Thank you. Next, we've got short-term rental. Next, we've got short-term rental, Ryan Pruitt, inspections and codes.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, members of council, Mr. City Attorney. Wanted to come back with some short-term rental ordinance clarifications and a couple of recommendations. As you know, we have a moratorium in place right now until May 15th. So we are not currently accepting new applications to kind of look at this ordinance and see, see what kind of changes may need to be made. So the first one recommendation would be to revise section 4.9.4 to reflect timeframes for the permits to be renewed. Right now, that section just says permits should be renewed on an annual basis. So the question comes up, is that a year from when the permit was issued or is that based on calendar year? So our recommendation is to revise that language to match the business license requirement, which basically means you get issued a permit, it's good till December 31st, and then you have till April 1st to renew it. If you fail to renew it, then basically you've you've passed on that. So in a cap district, if you fail to renew it by April 1st, then that permit would become available to another property in that district that wanted to start a short-term rental. Another clarification, 4.9.7, paragraph D, was the sticker. There's a lot of questions about what the sticker would look like if it had contact information on it. This is an example of what the sticker could look like. Again, just something short and sweet that, again, could help a officer responding to an issue at that property identify that, hey, this is a short-term rental. In addition, we have been working with the Columbus Police Department to give information to them that they can then input into the 911 system. So if I got a call about a property that was a short-term rental, the 911 system would alert the dispatcher that, hey, this is a short-term rental. And then the occupant load, that was another topic of discussion last time. We we talked about short-term rentals. The current ordinance caps the occupancy at two occupants per bedroom plus one additional occupant. And an occupant is anybody in there that's is a person in, so it's not people staying overnight. It's just a person in in the structure. So this load is in line with other municipalities. Atlanta, Savannah, they all have very similar language. Some of them do. They don't have the additional occupant. They just do straight two per bedroom. But our recommendation would be to leave this, you know, as it says, to cap that at two occupants per bedroom plus one. And again, the these rentals are intended to be short-term overnight accommodations and not necessarily event venues. So that's why we we recommend just leaving that the same. And so that's really all the recommendations we have. The caps are, you know, now in place with the numbers. We have developed a system in-house with our computer system and our permitting software to track the number of rentals per district, so we can enforce the cap, make sure we're doing all that right. So we don't really have any recommendations on the cap part of it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Counsel Kogle?
Can you give us a update on the illegal operating Airbnbs that are happening right now?
So we have been working on an enforcement plan to get those ones that are operating without a permit in line. So in our experience, most of the time, it's an education issue that they're not aware that they're supposed to have a permit from us. So as the moratorium comes to an end, you know, we're going to start the enforcement like any other enforcement case, which is to start out with certified mail to the owner's address notifying them that, hey, you're not in compliance. You need to bring yourself in compliance, give them a time period to do that. And then if they fail to do that, then we would go, you know, to knock it on doors and trying to issue citations.
What, and so what about, since there is a, you know, we put the moratorium on it just to kind of stop the bleeding until we could address the caps in in more depth since the, whether it's 5%, 10% or a number. The, I do, I have a couple of citizens that are kind of reaching out to address that they purchase these properties with the intent of Airbnb-ing them within, I don't, I I'm not sure, very close to when we put the moratorium in 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 play. We're unaware that we are putting the moratorium in play. And if we were to stick with those caps, is there a line that they have to get into? Can they submit their applications? Can they not submit those applications? There seems to be some confusion between just how how that process works. Can you clarify?
So the the current ordinance does not have any type of waitlist provisions or anything like that. So the intent would be, you know, it'd be first come, first served. Once a, you know, if it's not at the cap or a cap, one of the permits in a cap district, you know, went away, then it'd be first come, first served for the first person to come back in it. Would I have been telling people that call asking about the moratorium, you know, is tell them, you know, right now it's scheduled to expire May 15th? And, you know, so they can come in May 16th and get a permit? And then I would, you know, follow up and contact them if if something were to change.
Okay.
Counsel Thomas?
Ryan, do you, I I assume that when somebody applies for a license for this, there's some kind of a directory or something that we tell them what the rules are and so forth. I would, I would hope that the rule about this is for, these are not to be for parties. These are to be for overnights, that that is said time and time and time and time again so that it that it registers so that they can't say, oh, I I missed that one. Well, it was on every page, you know, that kind of thing. But I I would, I would be interested in seeing one of the, at some point when you have time, one of the brochures that you give to people who rent these BnBs. Thank you.
And we have, with the new requirements, with the new requirements, we have been updating our website and updating our forms to reflect some of the new requirements and some of these new rules. So I'll be glad to share that, the new packets with you.
Counsel Grab?
Thank you. Can you clarify once again what you're doing with the properties that are, right now, acting as Airbnbs? And they are not licensed?
So we're going to follow a process. Our plan is to follow a process like most of the other enforcement issues that we take, which is to issue a written warning first to make sure that the owner-operators are educated on the issue and how they are violating the ordinance, and then give them a defined period of time to come into compliance. Unfortunately, with the moratorium, they can't come into compliance right now. But as the moratorium ends, that's the plan, is to notify them, hey, you're not in compliance. Here's how long you have to get into compliance. And then if they fail to do that, you know, we have to follow up with the next step, which is to try to personally find them and and give them a citation.
Okay, I just, I'm business-friendly, but I'm also, businesses have rules and they need to follow them. And we do have ordinances on the books right now, and they are not in compliance with the laws of Columbus, Georgia right now. So are we, are these properties that are currently being used as Airbnbs, do they take that area over their cap?
Yes, so specifically in the downtown historic district, yes, the number of Airbnbs operating down there does exceed the cap.
So why are you giving them any chances? Because they're already over the cap, which will be a new ordinance, and they're already breaking the current ordinance. So why aren't we on them?
That's, yes, you are correct, and that's, in the historic districts where they already at, are at the cap, then those people will never have an opportunity to get the permit. So we would be able to go after them immediately, and we could start doing that.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, sir. All right, the the, you're giving them time to come into a compliance, and what it, what is that time period? Is that through the end of, through the moratorium?
So since we can't, you know, we can't issue new permits during the moratorium. So again, with the cap districts, we can immediately go after those because they will never have a chance to get a permit since it's capped. But in the uncapped areas, once the moratorium expires, you know, we would give them probably 14 days to get their permit and get into compliance.
Would there be a way to give those that are in compliance priority? I mean, if they're, if they're out of compliance now, it it seems like they're bad actors and they're not, they're not doing what they should be doing.
So if they're in compliance already, then they, you know, will be able to continue to operate. And we we can renew permits right now. It's just the new permits that we can't issue. So those, those that are in compliance, because we've had a bunch of them that have been trying to get a 2023 business license, and they have to come see us for a new 2023 short-term rental permit before they can get that business license. So we are renewing licenses for those that are in good standing.
Licensing knows not to issue unless they have the permit. Is that right? Okay. Are you, you're bringing back a plan to to allow this going forward? I mean, how will Airbnb operate going forward? And you're going to bring a plan back to us for that?
Well, like I said, really with the the one adjustment, with the language about the how the permitting, when it expires and how you renew it, really, everything else with it is going to stay the same as the current ordinance. So we just need to step up the enforcement efforts and really, you know, dedicate some man-hours to going after the ones that are not permitted.
Like, I guess my concern lies in, th- these are basically neighborhoods. And in giving a permit and a business license, we're allowing a business to go next door to a a home to and potentially disrupt the quality of life of the families around it. So what I would like to see is some type of hearing before PAC and this body to whether we allow an Airbnb to, and allow the homeowners to have, be able to come and air their grievance about it or air their support for it. I I feel like that's the way this should be appro- approached, because without rezoning, we're allowing businesses to go everywhere. Anywhere, really, as long as they get a permit and a license. So we we don't know who they are. We don't know any kind of background check on them, but we're allowing them to go in. And I I just think it needs to be vetted a little further. So I would like you to consider that going going forward.
And so that, you know, would defer to the city attorney a little bit, but it it kind of sounds like a special exception use for each short-term rental.
Counsel Kogle?
Special exception would work. Thank you.
Can you, when, and maybe, and maybe this is already worked out, but can we include a kind of step-by-step process on, with like actionable, measurable steps on how we are going to enforce those that are not in compliance, like what that looks like? So if that's, you know, the first day, you get a citation, and then two weeks later, you are served with papers or, and then two weeks after that, certified mail, instead of just kind of throwing it to the wind?
Yes, I can provide you a timeline or my plan of a timeline for, like you said, sending the initial letters, you know, how that step. We've done that in the past for our other enforcement cases, so I can provide a timeline of how a case should be worked for a non, you know, non-licensed short-term rental.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Cliffon, the city attorney?
I was just going to follow up. The special exception idea would throw this entire category of use into a zoning decision. I mean, if you tried to go that route, and it'd be every single application. So I don't, you know, as a practical matter, that may not work, but it's something you can think about.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think that's all the questions.
Thank you, sir. Next is going to be a really short one. Counselor Davis called me a few weeks ago about signs on right-of-way. And I had the deputy city manager to put together kind of a plan to get them off the right-of-way. And and Counsel David, this is one where I've told them, we want $1,000 fines when we find, when we, we're out. You see them on every corner, whether it's Obamacare or whatever, these little signs. And so we're out to find who's putting them out, because we we're going around collecting them. And 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 if I have to go to court and stand before the reporters judge myself, I plan to do that. But we need maximum fines when we catch these people. And so I've asked her to work on it.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, thank you for that preface. We, of course, have, throughout the pandemic, have had issues with cleanliness in our city. City has, of course, invested well over $10 million with the cleanup efforts in assisting Public Works with pickup and and those kinds of things. I have talked with the police chief regarding assisting us with littering and making cases, as the city manager has already indicated. And so there is going to be a zero-tolerance approach in terms of issuing citations for those persons who are caught littering. And then, of course, even when we get to the point of identifying those who are dumping and illegal dumping in those various areas. And so that $1,000 fine is going to hit them in the pocket, and our cameras, I think, are going to help us with that. We, of course, have started an aggressive effort with our quality control team. And as you know, those are our employees who go out on the weekends in the various districts, and they are putting together work orders and any violations. They are providing that back to us so that they can go out and do what they need to do to correct those things. And so they have started that. We started a few weeks ago, and they have collected already over 400 signs on the city's right-of-ways in districts 1, 2, 5, and 6 so far. Again, each weekend, they go out in a different district and making sure that they're, right now, I've told them that the focus is on picking up those signs, that they're going to get the signs, but they're still doing other work orders as well. But the priority is let's get those signs, because all that does is continue to clutter our city. It looks worse, even though, even when we have litter all over the place, and then you have the signs, then you have the tires, all of those things that we're dealing with. And so right now, we're going to continue with a progressive, you know, move of removing these signs. And so just wanted to let you know that we're on, that's ongoing, and we're continuing, so.
Counsel Tucker?
Yes, thank you so much. And I I would, I would be remiss if I didn't say Dee Armstrong had called me. And it was sometime last year, she wanted to do a special report because, and Counselor Davis and I spoke about this issue prior to him speaking to you, but she wanted to do a special report because it's flooded everywhere, you know? And I know what you say as far as how we go out, you know, every weekend in these different districts. And I just want to make sure that even though it's listed 1, 2, 5, and 6, the next weekends, it'll be
The others.
3, 4, 7, and 8. It's a rotating
It's rotating.
Every, you know, weekend. So while individuals are looking and they just saw those four districts, the other four districts will
They're coming.
Also
Absolutely.
Have the same efforts being done. But I do, I would like us to do some type of PSA with Dee Armstrong, because she really wanted to do a story in reference to these signs. But not only on the right-of-ways, we have signs on telephone poles. We we just have signs everywhere. And also sadly, we have certain signs that are put up, say, for, um, um, realty. And you can see graffiti on them now, like gang right there coming into Revelation Mission, and I'm tired of it. And it needs to come down. But coming into our church, we got crips up on the sign selling houses in the subdivision. Those things need to be addressed, too. So it's multi, you know, facet. Yes, the signs on the right-of-way, but signs that we see graffiti, we need to reach out to those individuals. we need to reach out to those individuals and have them to, to remove that. Because what's going on is those individuals in these gangs are tagging neighborhoods. So we need to remove that too. That's a way to clean our neighborhoods and take back our neighborhoods from some of the gang issues. Um, and then also on the telephone poles, that's illegal. You know, you, we should not have them on the telephone poles too. So if we can address those three issues, and I know it's predominantly the ones with the, the gang issues are predominantly within the south and the east side. But in reference to those telephone poles, if we can get those signs down too.
Absolutely. And we'll just want people to know that as you're investing and paying, uh, spending money on those signs and you're putting them on our city property, you're wasting your money because they will be removed and destroyed.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, uh, the city manager and I had, had a great conversation on this and he understood right away. And both he and I were on the, on the same page with this. And he told me he was going to look into it. And I just want to thank you. Thanks for taking action on this, Deputy City Manager Goodwin, and the others involved. Thank you for coming up with, with being a little more aggressive on this because it is a, uh, it reflects the character of our community in allowing these people to do what they're doing. And, and, you know, and they know they're getting away with it right now, but, uh, it looks like we're going to tighten it, tighten it up a little bit. But you see all those heads shaking at Mr. Broadwater? I see, you, you see all those heads shaking out there, Mr. City Manager? Yeah. They're with us too. They know. And, uh, I know five of my constituents, you're probably going to get a call from and, and, uh, and thank you as well. But, um, I ju- I just want to, thanks for, uh, bringing that to the forefront and all those involved.
Counselor Thomas?
I'm not sure to whom, to address this, but I had a, uh, someone call me the other day and he was complaining about all of the signs in his neighborhood. And he asked me, could he take them up? Is there any kind of regulation that says a private citizen can't take them up? And they were the insu- uh, the, uh, insurance and the realty and all of those kinds of signs. Is there a problem with, with?
Well, that's the city attorney, because it's our right-of-way and that we have identifiable clothing, cars, vehicles.
Right.
And, and some badges that we carry, you know, that they can do it on our right-of-way. And we can call for police backup, but I don't know about citizens, uh, I'm a city attorney.
Yeah, I would say let the city personnel do it because it might be a danger on, on a certain sign or device. And I'd let the professionals, if he could call three-one-one, let them handle it. Now, private person taking something else off somebody else's private property, that's another matter. That, that'll be a private dispute, but I would let the city folks get it off of the right-of-way because there might be a danger involved that they don't know about.
That's right. Minimize confrontation, so I think.
He also volunteered to, uh, go to work for you, uh, and be one of the people who pick up these signs, so. But, uh, okay, I'll, I'll pass that along. Thank you.
All right, that's all the questions.
Thank you. And next we have, uh, municipal court clerk, Reginald Thompson. And this may be his first appearance before this body since he has become municipal court clerk, uh, Clerk Thompson.
Thank you for your patience, too.
And mayor, we have a former council member in the audience as well.
I see that.
I think he knows her.
Good afternoon, all. Like you said, Reginald Thompson, clerk municipal court. Good to be before you all today to, uh, present, uh, what I've done the past, uh, two years there in, uh, the clerk's office, going to give you an overview of, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. My, uh, chief deputy is Wendy Lewis, the assistant chief deputy is, uh, Heather Givens, she's behind me here. And the, uh, finance manager is also behind me, Justin Allen. Okay. Me and the mayor the other day, we went in the elevator and, uh, I said, Mayor, I think that, uh, we were called the second business office in the government center. And, uh, the, the, the first one is, uh, they said it's a probate court. Uh, they do a lot of things there. But, um, in twenty twenty-one, we had, uh, nine thousand three hundred seventy-eight people that came, citizens that came in to use the municipal court. And for twenty twenty-two, uh, we served eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-two citizens there. And you asked us, how do we keep up with that? We have a signing sheet there at the front, uh, uh, counter. And, uh, we asked everybody to sign in. But, uh, we do have occasions that some people don't sign in. We may be missing probably, uh, uh, two to five hundred people per year sometimes. We do do court, uh, every day. We do civil every day and we do, uh, criminal court on Monday, Tuesday evening, Wednesday, and Fridays. But what we do, uh, if you don't know what we do in the municipal court, what we do basically is dispossession warrants and, uh, money judgments. And that is for the landlord-tenant relationships. And, uh, it can range for a dispossession warrant, forty-four dollars. And if then if they get a money judgment, that money judgment could range anywhere from forty-six dollars to sixty-one dollars, depending on what that landlord wants and back rent from, uh, their tenant. Uh, then we also do, uh, civil suits, uh, a max of fifteen thousand dollars. And, uh, and if the person, the plaintiff gets a judgment in that civil suit, then they can do a garnishment there in the office. And with the garnishments, what we do are continuing garnishments. Those are through the, uh, person's, uh, job. Uh, we do bank garnishments, uh, that's a one-time, uh, through the banks. They can do all of them if they don't know what a person, where they bank at. And then, uh, uh, we also do, uh, the ten-day demands. And the sheriff department handles those ten-day demands where they go out and try to collect the money from a business owner. Then we also do the, uh, ritter possessions. Those are basically the, uh, buy here, pay here places and you rent and own places. And then we also do, uh, warrant applications. Uh, a lot of times they come in, they, if they want a warrant, take out a warrant on somebody, we don't do that. What we do is the, uh, warrant applications and, uh, they're twenty dollars, um, to do the warrant application. Then, once they get before the judge, if the judge grabs them the warrant, then they can do it that way. Uh, and then we also do, uh, uh, criminal warrants and, uh, citations with the, uh, sheriff department and with, uh, fishing game. And, uh, one thing about it, the, uh, what you're going to see, show you later on is that, uh, citations have really picked up, uh, since the, uh, sheriff countryman has, uh, taken over. And, uh, giving you a, uh, bar graph of what, what we've done for, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. As for dispossession warrants, as you see for twenty twenty-one, uh, almost did five thousand. But, you know, it was, was the moratorium for twenty twenty-one. Uh, so keep that in mind. For, uh, twenty twenty-two, it's part of the moratorium, but it got back to normal. And, uh, we're, we're back on track as we usually have done with dispossession warrants. Dispossession warrants are probably, probably seventy percent of what we do there in the office. Uh, then we also, you see the civil suits, a little over, uh, a thousand for twenty twenty-one. And the same, they're right there together for twenty twenty-two. Garnishments are not that many, uh, less than a thousand on both of those for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Same for the, uh, ritter possessions and warrant applications. And you can see, uh, not that many that come through the clerk municipal court's office. Giving you, uh, what we took in twenty twenty-one civil money. Take in, and then we're also giving you what we disperse out. Disperse out is just to the, uh, the, uh, state entities and local entities that we, uh, disperse money out to. These are not included in our garnishments at all in these funds that we disperse out. Uh, let you look at that. I don't want to go through each month, but it has, I got you January through December on there. And then for twenty twenty-two, it was an increase, uh, showing you what, uh, we, uh, receive into the municipal court and distribute out. And this is who we distribute out to, uh, for the, our civil funds. As you can see, Columbus Consolidated Government. Then we have the, uh, uh, GSCCCA gets their percentage. Then the, uh, Muskogee County Law Library that's there on the eighth floor, they get this percentage. Then the, uh, Office of Dispute Resolution, uh, that's where the mediation comes in. They get their percentage of the civil money. And then the Sheriff's Retirement Fund of Georgia also gets their percentage. Something unique about the criminal money that we take in every month, as you can see for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, everything that we take in for criminal money has to be distributed back out to the different entities. No criminal money is kept. And I give you the list of, uh, who we give out the criminal money to again, Columbus Consolidated Government gets the, uh, majority on both civil and criminal, GSCCCA, the, uh, Muskogee County Law Library, uh, the, uh, Peace Officers Annuity and Benefit Fund, and then the, uh, Sheriff's Retirement Fund of Georgia. Then there's the, uh, want you to see the yearly contributions that are given to the Consol- Columbus Consolidated Government for civil and criminal. As you can see for twenty twenty-one, it was a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Then for, uh, twenty twenty-two, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And for criminal, it was, uh, seventy-nine thousand for twenty twenty-one. Then you can see the increase of almost double for twenty twenty-two. And that is the, uh, sheriff's department out here writing these citations, doing their job. So that concludes my presentation to you. Do you have any questions for me?
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, sir. Thank you for being very transparent. I did have a question in reference to victims' witness. How much, if, if you have that number, how much money do you allocate towards victims' witness? Because I know a lot of people don't know that, that portion that, you know, you actually have that money come out of your budget, your, what you receive.
Not only comes out of mine, also, uh, the Court Superior Court's office also. So that money, uh, hard to say how much is in there, but it comes out of that Office of Dispute Resolution. It's a part of that, that fund there.
And we send, because a lot of times people don't know that they can come through victims', um, witness to request those funds. Sadly, you know, we have had a lot of murders, but they don't know that they can come in and request those funds for funeral, um, arrangements. Right? And I know that we send so much money back to the state because those victims don't, you know, request those funds. And, um, I know there's something that we probably need to talk about, um, sadly, because we've had a lot of murders and a, a lot of incidents and families. You know, the, the one that was, um, the kids that was killed on Steamwell Road, they could have benefited from those victim services. But I just wanted to put that out there that if you don't use those funds, we send those funds back to the state, right? Is that how that works?
You're right. You're correct on that. And that is, uh, they're going through, uh, District Attorney's Office or not? Yeah, they go through the District Attorney's Office on that to get those funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Huff?
Great job, sir.
Thanks, sir.
You explained, I just wanted, for my understanding on your monies that you receive and the monies that you disperse, what's left over, you get to use that in your office? Does that go back in the, when you were showing the monies that you took in? Then the monies that was dispersed out, the money left over, do you get to use that?
No, we don't use any of that money like that. No, uh, the money, like I say, any stuff that, I didn't include the garnishments that are paid out monthly. So that is part of that, those funds also that are brought in. But none of the money is, is, is kept for us to use in any kind of way like that at all.
Okay, I was just trying to understand. Where, where does it go?
That money, like I said, it goes to the different, um, entities that I showed you. Then also, we have garnishments that are paid out every month.
Okay.
Yeah.
So at the end of the year, do you get to use any of that for other garnishments or you just start all over again?
No, start all over again. We don't, uh, none of that. If anything is left over, the judge, uh, sometimes if it's old, has cases that may be from two thousand twelve, something like this, now you're looking at what, thirteen, what, eleven years ago now? And if he's, uh, he has to give, uh, the okay in order what to do with those funds. And he would distribute out probably some, some local charity or something like that.
Okay, okay. I was, I was trying to understand because I went to, um, Atlanta one year, I won't say where I was, but to A Benefit. And somebody donated some leftover funds. I was trying to figure out how all this takes place.
That's right.
He likes wearing those kind of suits.
Okay, thank you.
Here's to be all the questions. Thank you, sir. Thank you for what you do as well.
Okay, thank you all.
So thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Uh, mayor, the final, uh, update is from the Trade Center, Haley Tilley, uh, exec- executive director of the Columbus, Georgia Convention and Trade Center.
Hello, everyone. First, I want to say thank you for letting me update the city council and citizens of Columbus on the business of the Columbus, Georgia Convention and Trade Center. Um, each year is my desire, um, to let you know about the success of the events that we bring to Columbus and to let you know about some of the opportunities to continue to improve the experience for all of our guests. Due to having to reschedule a few times due to city council's agenda, this will be a recap on FY twenty-two. But don't worry, I will go fast and also give you a preview of a very successful FY twenty-three so we can get caught back up and to see if you have any questions. Before I begin this presentation today, I have to express that these results would not and could not happen without each and every Trade Center employee. It just could not happen. This team truly has to work together from being a business that is now open seven days a week, irregular hours weekly, and truly understanding the importance of hospitality for this city. I also want to give credit to the many partners who also make the experience for our guests successful. And that, as you know, includes Visit Columbus, the Sports Council, Columbus State University, the River Center, Civic Center, Uptown, um, Columbus, and many of the department heads that have been here today. To execute the results that I'm about to share, it truly takes a city that has the same vision of service, hospitality, tourism, and our desire to create remarkable experiences. So recovery year, that's what this was supposed to be. However, it was a record-breaking year. We still had a very, um, strategic goal to have four hundred and ninety-eight events, so we had a total of six hundred events, eight hundred and fifty-five event days, over a hundred and sixty-nine thousand attendees that walked through our building. And then our space rental revenue was one point four million over. The net profit you see here is actually more. We ended up at one point five million in total net profit for the year. And every month, working with Visit Columbus, we would get our economic impact numbers. So for this fiscal year, it was over six point six million. That's why we exist, to serve our citizens, to serve our people, and to tell people why Columbus is truly a great place to have events. I want to share this. So we do something at the Trade Center where I call it's P plus Q equals RE. And most people, if you go around and ask what the business mission statement is, it's hard to recite a paragraph. So we make it simple. P is the people, Q is the quality. You put those two together, you create remarkable experiences. We had surveys that came in from our guests and for the fiscal year, our planning scored a ninety-seven, event day a ninety-two, F and B a ninety-five, post-event ninety-seven, and overall for the year, a ninety-seven. So I want to highlight, I think pictures tell the best story. Pictures allow us to see some of these events that come to reality. And I want you to know that industry standards predicted and prepared us that this would be a recovery year, as I mentioned. However, it really goes back to the support of the city council, the mayor, the city manager, to trust the decisions I was making during COVID for us to operate in a business in a safe way. Yes, we took risks, but we did it safely, and I'm grateful. Yes, we took risks, but we did it safely, and I'm grateful for this community in supporting that. So some fun stuff that we've never had before, because you got to get creative, we had a B two fighting series that took place. Not to mention the Georgia Congressional Luncheon that finally came back to Columbus, Georgia. NDIA, we've been working with this group out of Washington, D.C. This was their first event back since COVID and took place here in Columbus. The Georgia Thespians, we're so glad to have them, and I can't go throughout our presentation without spotlighting them. But this was their first time back during this fiscal year, when they went virtual one year during the pandemic. African Land Force Summit. If you don't recall, back in March, we had an international convention where every superior leader from all the countries in Africa chose Columbus. They could have went anywhere else in this nation, but they came here. We also had a dinosaur adventure, because we want to have diverse events. We know that our community wants more events that focus on family. Dancing Stars of Columbus, it's important to focus on our nonprofits in our community, and I think we do a great job in helping us. Be in an affordable location where they are bringing those awareness issues to our citizens. The Columbus UNCF Mayor's Mask Ball, I'm sure you'll see some familiar faces in this slide, and we also have that one coming up very soon again. Safety in Our Schools Conference, we know that this is a topic that is so important for our community. And we have created such a great relationship with this organization, and we look forward to the possibility of them coming back in two thousand and twenty-four. The Ninth Annual Phoenix City Mayor's Ball. And so that was just a glimpse, because there's so many, remember, it was over six hundred events. But FY twenty-three, I got to show you a glance on where we're at. We had Beat the Heat Pickleball Tournament. This was our first ability to work with the sports council on how to have an inside pickleball tournament. Due to the heat that takes place here in Columbus, Georgia in the summertime. We also had the Georgia Democratic Party Convention that was able to come and be a part of our building. The Georgia Fire Conference came back to us and very supportive, Chief Sal supported this initiative greatly. And we were so excited to see that they chose Columbus. The Alpha Phi Alpha Georgia District Conference, another conference that we have been really trying to get to come experience Columbus, and they did and had a blast. The One Hundred and Seventy-Fifth Greater Columbus, Georgia Chamber of Commerce Gala. The Aflac Christmas Party with Vanilla Ice. I have to tell you, we were expecting only about nine hundred people, and that guest count went up to over twenty-seven hundred in a couple of days. And we got very creative to make sure we could serve all those guests safely. This was a great conference back in January, and hopefully you saw the impact. Some of you attended the Georgia Association of Realtors Convention. We were so glad. This is another conference, and because of the planning that took place during COVID, because we just didn't sit back and say, well, we'll just wait for the business to come to us. Our team made a plan, and they executed it. I could have come up with a plan all day long, but if I don't have the team actually seeing the vision, seeing the mission, none of this would have happened. And then we saw our wedding venue, so not to mention, we are still working with brides, in fact, over eighty weddings. I do want to, before I go to this next slide, I do want you to also know that we are not stopping. Right now in our building, we have the Georgia Tactical Officers, last week, Georgia nine-one-one, and the Georgia Cattlemen came back to us. We have Creative South in a few months that are going to grow their event by coming to the Trade Center. The Georgia Association of Educators, Water Professionals, Delta Kappa Gamma, the Georgia Funeral Conference. The Georgia Republican State Convention with over three thousand people in June. The Miss Georgia Conference Competition, the Prince Hall Grand Lodge, Georgia Police and Fire Games, and Georgia District Exchange Club. Just to name a few until the end of June. Now, this is remarkable, and again, our team is doing this, not just me, it's the Trade Center team. We did have a complete re-hall of our catering department. This took place in December. We are now with Oakview Hospitality, and we have a new executive chef, Chef Brian Gilmore. Unfortunately, a lot of y'all were not able to come to our Taste the Difference event because it was during council. But I will tell you, hopefully soon you will experience his amazing talent. He attended school at the J.C. Culinary Institute of Kansas. And off that, he has been, he's been from Alaska to Yellowstone, to the Virgin Islands, to major golf, national, major golf resorts. You name it, the experience is there, and he takes what he has learned from around the country. To make the food here at the Trade Center uniquely united and tastefully exquisite. And I have had the best compliments since this chef has come on board. And excited because you got to have good food when you're serving all these great people in our town. So other projects to come. So as you can imagine, with more people coming to the Trade Center. It creates more projects that I cannot forget about. And one thing that's been talked a lot about today is garages. So we are going to work on the next steps on renovating our parking garage. I have had great conversations with Ryan Pruitt, also with Pam Hodge, on the next steps on what that looks like for us. This is actually a project that was supposed to take place many, many years ago, and now is the time. We're ready. The Connector Bridge, haven't forgot about that. So I am so excited that we do have our hotels opening up and that the Hampton is now open. I do expect very soon to begin the conversations again on getting that connector from the Marriott to the Trade Center. Because believe it or not, that connector bridge will win so much more business just to have that out there. Very gracious for the ARP. We will be getting a new HVAC system. A lot of our HVAC units are original. I'm going to say that again, original from nineteen seventy-nine. So it is time to make sure that that is up to par with code as well as providing the services where. I know that when people come in, they're going to have air conditioning and heat. I don't want to ever have to worry about that. Another critical issue, and y'all have heard this throughout many presentations today, but it is an issue at the Trade Center, is our security system. We are so grateful that we are on the process, working with Lisa Goodwin and the camera project, on having an updated camera system in our building. With that many people coming through our doors every single day, and so many exits throughout our building and entrances in our buildings. It is hard to manage to make sure that we are a safe facility. My number one thing not only is serving the people, but making sure our employees and the citizens, when they come there, are safe. And so this security system is vital. It's something that you're going to hear me advocate more and more. And I think I need to, because I don't want to be in a situation where it's too late. So we're working on that, as well as fiber optic. I got to give a shout out to our ID department. I don't think they get enough recognition on a daily basis. They are always making sure that we are where we need to be, and one thing that we are working on is our internet. If you've been in our building, there's a lot of bricks, and we're trying to work at the ability to have high-stream internet. Because that is an expectation from our clients, especially since we've gone through the pandemic. Most of our conferences have a hybrid or streaming component, and we cannot be obsolete by having internet that could or may not work. And then with anything cosmetic updates, our carpet is now outdated. Our chairs, which I hear complaints from some of you at times about our chairs, and it's true, it is time. It's time to do a little bit of a facelift, and so we're making a plan on what that looks like.
Haley, good stuff happening. You must really love what you do.
I do.
I can tell. I can tell the enthusiasm and your spirit really resonates, so thanks for all the good things. You know what I'm excited about? I know the city manager's working on a plan, but I see great things in the future, especially with the Liberty District Theater. And, you know, with our Civic Center and the Trade Center, and now the Liberty District Theater. I mean, I see something there, some synergy that could happen, and now you talk about this guy that can really. Put on a spread, put out a spread, it's just top-notch. I mean, that's exciting. But being able to do that and to offer certain, you know, aspects of the value that the city brings to the table with the Trade Center, Civic Center, now the Liberty District Theater. I think there's just something there, Mr. City Manager. I know that I'm just excited about what he's doing and that we finally got to that point, that good things are happening there. But keep up the good work, and I can tell you love what you do.
I really do. Thank you for trusting me with it.
Sure.
Counselor Tucker.
Yes, thank you, Haley. I'm so happy that you were finally, finally able to get on the agenda. Like Counselor Huff said, he was at an event last week, and I was at an event last week. And that room was completely packed for the women's empowerment from edge to edge. But what I saw is a lot of activity, and the first thing I thought about is. Does the Trade, do the Trade Center have the staffing to actually put on all those events? Not only to put on the events, but I can imagine the cleaning that takes, you know, takes place. To make sure that you transition from, you know, one event to the next. And on Friday, I think you said you had an event that started at three o'clock? So we had to get out of the room and out of that area, so you can flip it. But I did want to find out about the cleaning. Is it like a specific, like at the Civic Center, I think they have a dedicated cleaning crew. Do you actually have a dedicated cleaning crew at the Trade Center? I'm trying to figure out.
You bring out a very great point. Now, the Civic Center, they do have positions that's listed as custodian-type roles strictly. And so one thing that we're looking at, because cleanliness is so important. And with the amount of time that we're flipping, right now, my operations team, which I just, if y'all see them, they have the blue shirts on. Please applaud them, give them a handshake, tell them they're doing a good job. This team is flipping these spaces, but they're also responsible for all the cleanliness of the building, too. And so at this point, with the amount of event increase, you mentioned staffing, staffing is always going to be something that we are desperately needing. And so one thing that we're looking at, and city manager helps support me on the temp seasonal employees, which has been just a world of a difference to get some people in the door, right? But now we're seeing, and one thing I'm proposing in our budget this coming up year, is to actually have a department of employees. That can focus just on the cleanliness of the building. To where they may not want to flip a room and flip tables and set chairs and do risers and staging. But they're going to focus on making sure the bathrooms are presentable, making sure that from that huge luncheon, was there any debris that was left on the floor? So we can vacuum it and get it ready for the next group that's coming in. So that is a need, that's a priority right now, so you hit spot on on something that I'm looking at. Because we're at a level now where the business that's coming in, we do need designated employees where their prime responsibility will be cleanliness. Versus trying to balance having to set a room, flip a room, and make sure the space is clean at the same time. Because majority of our events are ending around midnight, and then we have approximately six hours, seven hours to get the building flipped for the next event coming in. So thank you for recognizing that.
Yeah, and I was thinking, and I know oftentimes, we have kind of put COVID in the back of our minds. Because, you know, the world has opened back up. But my thought process is, is just so many people that we want to ensure our spaces are totally clean. So we're not transferring, you know, COVID is still out there.
It's still there, and research has also shown that having people visibly cleaning during all times of the day. Gives people a sense of safeness and calmness when they're attending their events. So that's another thing, it's just that perception of not just seeing someone going in there in between times, but actually have them physically present, cleaning at all times.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Haley, I owe you an apology. It, I guess I've just taken for granted for over the last seven years that everything's going to be great every time you go down there. And it just, it is, and I've heard from so many people that how much they've enjoyed whatever event it was that they attended. So you've set the bar high, and I agree with Bruce, we made the right decision. Thank you for all you do down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Haley, that's all the questions. Uh, we, city manager. Oh, your light just came on.
Yeah, I was just going to say that concludes the city manager's agenda. But I did want to just point out, I saw this story in Allegiant Inquirer about Muskogee County. A Muskogee coroner forced to use U-Haul to transport bodies, blames outdated equipment. And they called me yesterday for a quote regarding that matter, and I did send them a quote. But I wanted you to be clear that, and, you know, whether it's been the police department, sheriff's office, fire EMS. If they have come to us with an emergency, a purchase or otherwise, you know that we handle that. And so I had finance director to look at fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, to see if there's ever been a request for a van transport vehicle. And there has not been. And I think there's one in the current budget that's going to be brought forward to you. But I want to be clear, you know, I see a U-Haul on the front page of the paper that we are using to transport bodies, and that does not represent or reflect Columbus, Georgia. And so I did send a quote that if the need for a new transport van is an immediate emergency for the coroner's office. And the coroner makes that immediate emergency known, his request will be considered now as an emergency purchase situation. We don't have to wait until the budget, in other words, because we're better than that. And so I wanted to make clear to you that it's not that we have not approved anything, there's been no request. And if there's a request that comes forward, and you show me a U-Haul on the front page where you're taking bodies to Atlanta. I'm going to get you a van, and we're going to bring it to council as an emergency purchase. It's on there. It's in the newspaper. So I just wanted to be clear about that, so that you don't leave thinking that we didn't do something. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Thomas? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. City Manager, I've had a lot of questions since the renaming or redesignation, as they're calling it now. Fort Benning to Fort Moore, about what the city is going to do. And I heard Deputy City Manager Hodge say that you are working on that. Could we have some kind of a report in the next meeting or so about where we are and what we're doing and what we're looking at? And all of those kinds of issues, I think that would be interesting for the public as well as for councilors, so we can answer questions.
We can certainly do that.
Okay, and then, Mr. Mayor, I would like to request, I think I sent to the counselors the report that we got from the. Newly selected Recorder's Court judge on some of the changes that they have made in Recorder's Court. In their activities as well as in their facilities and so forth. And I'd like to request a report from him in the next couple of meetings. So that, again, our citizens can know what's going on down at Recorder's Court. They've made quite a difference down there, and I think we need to pump them up. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Will do. Thank you. All right. Doesn't appear to be any more questions. Madam Clerk, we'll go to your agenda.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilors. For the Clerk's Agenda, item one. This is an honorary street designation application that was submitted by Pastor Darnell Skinner, Jr. He's with the Bread of Life Christian Center. He's requested signage at the intersecting streets at each end of the one-block area. Of Manchester Expressway and Forty-Sixth Street in honor of Bishop L.D. Skinner, Sr.
Motion in the second to refer it to the Board of Honor. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion second, receive the minutes. Any edits or any questions of any of the minutes that have been submitted? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Fair or see?
Next, we have board appointments. We will start with the mayor's appointments. We have the Housing Authority of Columbus. Mr. Mayor is nominating Ryan Clements to succeed Edward Burdishaw. He may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Mr. Clements. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Clements is confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. The Employee Benefits Committee, Mr. Timothy Smith, he was nominated to serve another term. He may be confirmed.
Move in second, a motion in second to confirm Mr. Smith. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have the Historic and Architectural Review Board. Mr. Shay Spencer was nominated to succeed.
Motion second to approve Ms. Spencer. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. We have the Board of Honor, the seat of Mr. Bob Heidrich. Mayor Protem Allen has requested that I. Mayor Protem Allen has requested that I compile a list of elected, former elected officials, and I will do that with the hopes of presenting a nominee for the council to consider. Next, we have the Building Authority of Columbus. We have the seats of Leela Carr and Vincent Allen. Both are open for nominations. The Columbus Aquatics Commission, we have the seats of David Helmick and Bruce Samuels. Both are open for nominations. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Now, I think we had a request to go into executive session for the city attorneys for real estate acquisition.
Yes, sir. Still have two requests, real estate acquisition and disposal and personnel.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session, if we can just, if we can clear the courtroom, the courtroom. All right, we are back in regular session. We were in executive session to discuss real estate procurement and personnel. There were no votes taken. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.